All right, welcome everyone to our special city council meeting Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five here in person at Liberty Lake City Hall as well as held remotely. We will take our roll call and approve our agenda here in a couple of minutes, but before we do that, we'll start with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Dunn, would you mind giving the invocation? Please stand.
Father and son, we are grateful to be here to speak of and to listen to words from each other about our community, inspiring us the ability to engage and to work together and to do the best thing for our community.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order now and start with our roll call. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Councilmember Cargill's here. Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right, thank you all very much. The mayor is out today. If we could have a motion to excuse the mayor.
So moved.
Second. All right, a motion by Councilmember Ball and second by Councilmember Kennedy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Passes six zero. We are now up to agenda approval. Are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda? Councilmember Kennedy.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to add to the agenda that we have council comments as we have in the past and eliminated this last time we did have a discussion and I feel that needs needs to be in there.
Okay, and where did you want to add that, Councilmember Kennedy?
Our normal spot would be, was that before reports after six?
So six B?
Six B, then normally it's in there after workshops.
Okay, so an eight B?
That would be fine.
Okay. I'll second that for discussion. Any discussion? Okay, so the motion is to add council comments to six B and to eight B. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries six nothing. Any other changes? All right, hearing none, we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes six zero. Thank you all. We have an agenda now. We are now up to citizen comments. As a reminder for those of you here in chambers, you'll have three minutes. Please tell us your name. And if you are a resident of the city and those of you online, stand by as well. Anybody in chambers? All right, anybody online?
You can rush the mic.
Okay, all right, just a reminder, we will have citizen comments again later on in the agenda. We are now up to a six B council comments. Council comments. Anybody?
Oh, I thought we were gonna do an eight B.
Uh, six B and A B.
Oh.
Any other?
Never mind.
Okay. All right, we are done with six B. We are now up to reports and inquiries, Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just quickly a reminder, I sent an email earlier this week that we've officially officially launched the Make-A-Request system. We briefed you on that a couple of times in the past. Just wanted to keep that front and center. This will be a fundamental upgrade to the method by which residents are able to let us know what things out in the community need to be looked at for maintenance and repair and other things. And so that system is now live and we're going to be messaging and providing some training materials so so people can use it effectively and navigate it. And we'll be giving you briefings about its use in the meetings to come. And that's really all I had to report this evening.
Okay, any questions for Mark?
So so it's live now? I thought it was just a practice thing right now or?
It it was for about a week. We were putting it through some live fire exercises with the Community Engagement Commission. We've we've gone through that and it was launched yesterday, I believe. So there there is an app that makes it really easy to use that will be putting a video out there to show how to get to and log in so that you're up and running in minimal amount of time.
Okay. Anything else for Mark? All right, thank you, Mark, very much. We are now up to item eight, the workshop discussion on the review of the proposed governance manual. Mark, do you wanna set our table here?
Sure, as you all probably remember from our last meeting to discuss the governance manual, we made it through chapters seventeen, ten, nine, and five, which leaves us chapter, starting in chapter seven and proceeding through three, four, and twenty-one on the initial order. And then we can, if everyone is agreeable, just go back up to the top and go through what's remaining. Unless individual council members want to go to a specific chapter after that, which is fine as well. I do want to point out that based on the conversation that occurred during the last special meeting, I put and I sent you all an email to this effect. However, after having gone back and watched the video of the first meeting, the section in chapter seventeen titled Increasing or Imposing New Taxes, the consensus that the council came to at the end of that discussion was to move that forward with essentially no changes from the proposed document. That was not what you saw in the information that I sent out. So what you have here that's labeled draft, chapter seventeen, includes the material that that I sent you in headings, annual legislative priorities, ballot measures, and includes the original language that the council reached consensus to pass through on increasing or imposing new taxes. And so this is just to correct that error. If we want to circle back to this tonight or at some future meeting to make sure everything is in there the way that you want it, we can do that.
Okay. All right, so with that having been said, if it's all right with the council, let's start with chapter seven, which is the meeting roles and procedures. And chapter seven is on or about page thirty-six, at least in the one I have. Councilmember Kurtz, do you wanna start with this?
I think it's thirty, it's thirty-seven on mine.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm not sure that I have anything. Let's see. So meeting roles and procedures. So I feel like this chapter has some things that we have either been silent on or that we have some policies and procedures that we do, but they haven't been written down. So adding those into a governance manual. It's a fairly short chapter, so if there's anything anybody had questions about or wants to ask about, feel free.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll take it, Mayor Protem. On page thirty-six, before we can get to that's forward, under points of order, the mayor is not mentioned. Doesn't the mayor have the right to make a point of order? I know there's its last sentence, the chair, which in this case could be the mayor.
So Councilmember Kennedy, let me interrupt you real quick. So just so as everyone is aware, Councilmember Kennedy is referring to technically what is in chapter six, a couple of paragraphs above where chapter seven starts. So go ahead.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
That's fine. Second paragraph up. It does not mention the mayor. The last sentence says the chair, in this case, the mayor. His assistants and the city attorney shall determine the point of order. My question is, wouldn't the mayor have the right to make a point of order? Probably Sean.
Sean, are you on the call with us?
Yeah, I'm here. I just had to get unmuted. I was trying to look at what we're talking about in the context. So I think it's the I think it's probably the sentence before. The presiding officer, I guess in this case, would be the mayor and the chair. I'm not sure the distinction here why there is that. Because the mayor is the one that controls the meeting and chairs the meeting. So the immediate response is in response, the presiding officer must rule advise on the item. So that would be the mayor, in my opinion, and then the chair would still be the mayor. We could have probably do some wordsmith, wordsmithing here, but I I think it's, you know, the mayor is gonna make the determination initially to the extent that there is an issue. I think it's probably the chair then with the assistance of the city attorney, you know, makes a final determination on all points of order subject to an appeal. I mean, that's the way I would read it and recommend doing it, but I'm not sure why in the context of presiding officer maybe above it's defined that way, but I I'm not seeing it right this minute.
So Sean and Councilmember Kennedy, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think what Councilmember Kennedy is asking is in that first sentence, it says a point of order can be made by any council member or the city attorney or city clerk if they believe the rules are of the council are being violated. Should the mayor be included as one of the people who can make a point of order? Oh, Councilmember Kurtz, sorry.
So my clarification would be that the mayor actually runs the meeting. It would be controlling the order of the meeting and so wouldn't need to necessarily make a point of order. It would be if the mayor wasn't keeping the meeting in order that we would make a point of order. So I hope that that makes sense, but the piece about the presiding officer and the chair, that's that is just the tidying up of the language and getting the right tense and the right phrase. It's the same person, but several cities say the presiding officer, some say chair. We just need to decide which verb, adjective, whatever word that is noun, we want to go with and pick one.
And I I would agree with with Annie. I think that's accurate because the mayor is one controlling the meeting. So she can, you know, attempt to bring order to the meeting as the chair. And so I would also, like I said before, I mean, I think we've always called it the chair. So it would just be a question of revising the language.
Councilmember Dunn, did you?
Uh, just, you know, my interpretation is the chair or the presiding officer can make order at any time, doesn't need to call a point of order for their own purpose. They direct the actions in the meeting to begin with.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Yeah, I'm not having any challenge with any of the comments of the attorney or the or the council. For me, it was just simple wordsmithing. I I feel that the mayor could be, should be in a position to say point of order versus just interrupting and saying, hold it now. Just a second. I don't like that. Because all of us are key to the word point of order. Somebody says that, we take immediate attention. So to me, it's 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 not a hill I'm going to prepare to die on. It's just a point for clarification.
We then Councilmember Rawl or Councilmember Spencer?
I just think the word should be the same. So either presiding officer or chair, one or another.
You're speaking to the mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just think that it should just be clarified, you know, either it's the presiding officer or it's the chair.
So let, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Chris.
I was just gonna say on page thirty-four of my document, where whatever one says presiding officer is the first line, it says the mayor shall be the presiding officer. The term may, presiding officer and chair have the same meaning for this document. But there's also a comment there to edit the document to reference chair, which was the committee's preferred word or title throughout. So that's just some of the final editing we need to do.
Oh, I'm fine with that. So is the consensus then to leave it as presiding officer or change it to chair?
If if I may, I I would just suggest leave it as right now.
Okay.
Because if Annie said it talks about something up above, we're gonna need to change that as well. So I agree. I think it's something as we go through when we're trying to make final revisions or I'm reviewing the the document, I'm gonna make it consistent with one or the other. Do that. So it sounds like it's defined earlier and or the same to say that. So we wanna, we wanna make sure that we're doing it throughout the document because it's very well, it could be through the whole section where they talk about that or even other parts for that matter.
Okay. All right, and we will return to section six later. So let's, uh, let's go back to section seven now or chapter seven. Any any issues with the city administrator participation paragraph? Hearing none. How about the city clerk? Several paragraphs? Okay, presentations?
So Mayor Protem, I have one item to point out in this section. There is a, in the fourth paragraph, the first sentence reads, request should be submitted to the city clerk at least ten days prior to the appropriate council meeting. I just want the council to deliberate on that. That is, that is a requirement that it currently is not in place and that constitutes a long period of time. So I just want to make sure that the council is comfortable with that.
Where is that under city clerk? Where are you?
Under the presentations
Last paragraph.
section of chapter seven.
Yeah, got it, got it. Okay.
In the fourth paragraph, first sentence.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I'll speak to this. I I feel like as we went through this, and I'm not sure why I thought this, but I was thinking that the ten days had more to do with outside presentations rather than council presentations or presentations that the city administrator might bring, because I agree, I think ten days is could be, could be tricky on certain issues because we might have something come up today and we wouldn't have ten days between now and the next meeting to tee up a new presentation. So I think at the maximum, we'd probably want to have it at seven days, but I still think like that, that that might even be too long.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, I think when we were talking about this in the group two, we were also talking about ten days is about the time before an agenda is presented to us. So for having a meeting on, well, that's not right. I think part of it was fulfilling a little bit of the three-touch rule and also getting some notification to people about what was gonna be presented. If you want to lean a little bit more heavily on the upcoming agenda items as a way to put that forward. But I feel like the spirit of this had to do with like not being surprised about things and then making sure that there was time to get it out to people. So I don't know that anybody's married to the ten days, but that was a little bit of the philosophy behind it for you guys to talk about.
Would the ten days be business days or just regular days?
Calendar days.
I was thinking calendar days, but yeah.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilmember.
I I agree with what Councilmember Kurtz was saying. I think we also had talked about bringing the those presentations on to our future topics, you know, that list that we look at. So not just what we're hoping to discuss for, you know, different workshops, but that also presentations would be put on there and then we could deliberate on those, whether we even want to have them because they could be outside organizations and we might say, well, we're just not interested in looking at that right now. So it would give us a little bit more control as to what those presentations are gonna be on on our agenda.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Mark, thanks for bringing that up. Let me ask you, do you have a personal opinion on the ten days? Should it be less or is it causing a challenge for trying to bring something forward?
So if the intent is to know in advance what presentations are potentially scheduled, that is a different issue than the way that I'm reading this paragraph. And so maybe just some clarity as to what the ten days is designed to accomplish. If if it's designed to accomplish requesting a presentation, meaning that a presentation cannot be on an an agenda unless it's requested ten days in advance, I think that rule would put a burden on staff that may present some problems. If it's just a matter of having a forecast of possible presentations, then maybe we could revise it to say that.
Okay. What I'm wondering is I'm looking, I'm seeing here is that the matter is an administrative issue. So that's quite specific. It's administrative issue. Generally, we have two weeks between our meetings. It's not uncommon for council to say to fast forward something to say, I I would like to have this on the next agenda. The council agrees and it comes up. But I'm wondering because administrative issue, that's something that probably is more involved with staff where the ten days might come into play more.
Well, for example, there are oftentimes when during the course of conversations, whether it's at a council meeting or based on communications that we're having with individual council members or other parties, there is a need to put a presentation on the agenda and in some cases that's two days before the agenda goes out. That's not ideal. But my fear is that if the requirement is ten days, we would be pushing items downstream that may need to be addressed faster than that.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm sorry. That that's my point. I'm concerned that that it would may happen exactly what you just explained. I think the ten days might be just too much.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn.
I think the utility of the word should is important here in that it would not eliminate the ability to make an inclusion. So should and express here is saying the best thing to happen. But it does not preclude the inclusion of something at a lesser date.
Uh, real quick, and then I'll come back to Councilmember Spencer. So Mark or or Councilmember Kurtz, I I'm trying, when I've read through this like three or four times, I was trying to get a sense of whether this is talking specifically about a city presentation. So for instance, if, you know, Kyle was coming in to make a presentation about finances or what have you versus a community presentation, you know, scraps coming in and wanting to make a presentation. And so what I I I'm, I don't know that I'm finding much clarity in in here about what what it's referring to. Maybe it's referring to both, but if it's referring to both, I guess my question then comes down to that second to last sentence where it says the city clerk shall consult with the city administrator and the mayor for a determination on whether the man a matter is an administrative issue and whether it should be placed on the upcoming council agenda. So obviously, if, you know, scraps or STA or whoever is gonna come in and make a presentation to us, those are not necessarily gonna be administrative issues. So is this section specifically trying to target both the community presentations, for lack of a better term, and the city presentations or just, are we just talking about city at this? Mayor Protem. Yes, Councilmember.
Yeah, so I I mean, I I think it's it's making clear, at least from the way it's written, that this is for second paragraph, request for presentations from outside entities or individuals to be placed on future agenda, but then drop down to the next paragraph, council members who wish to present to the council shall only do so. And then at the very end of that paragraph, presentations by council members and city staff shall follow the process outlined in this section. But if you jump down to the media and materials to count to Councilmember Dunn's point, the wording then changes from should to all written materials in point three there under media and materials. All written materials, including the written summary, must be submitted to the city clerk at least ten days prior to the appropriate council meeting. And I and I'm wondering, you know, I I think it's one thing for people to know that, hey, there's gonna be something on the agenda this day, ten days out, but to have to have to have provided all of the material for that presentation in that same time period, I think puts puts a burden on staff, council members and and any anybody for that matter. But I think organizations coming to present to us are probably gonna be a little more prepared to do that because they can say, you know, they're usually gonna be a little bit more flexible unless it's a time sensitive, sensitive issue. So so perhaps we we may need to look at, you know, breaking that out. If if it is somebody, a third party entity that wants to come to present to us, maybe it is a little bit more formal that way, but I don't know that we need to be that rigid putting self imposing those those restrictions on ourselves, staff and and council.
Councilmember Kurtz.
What if we, in the topic presentations, third paragraph, last sentence took out presentations by council member and city staff shall follow the process outlined in this section? Does that help or is it actually the days, the ten days? Okay, so if we took that out, then it seems reasonable, the ten days seems reasonable because we're focused more on outside presenters. The ten days, I mean, I guess, Mark, I'm looking at you.
My, 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 my professional opinion is ten days is is too much of a it's it's going to cause us to push things downstream because there are gonna be people who can't meet that. If the council's preference is to leave it at ten days, we we will, we will enforce that that parameter. I would I would probably recommend shortening that just so that we don't run into situations on a routine basis where we may have something on the schedule that we have to reschedule multiple times because of the requirement.
Councilmember Kurtz.
And I think that's what we're, exactly what we're trying to avoid happening is having people say, I want to present and then we have a jam-packed agenda and we can't get through everything. So what's your number? What would, what's reasonable?
So so let me answer that by saying a couple of things. If if the concern, if that is the concern, I think that we can better manage the schedule. And in some cases, that's just going to be letting a requester know that we don't have room on this agenda. We need to reschedule or schedule for sometime in the future. With respect to the submitted materials, the it, again, maybe the solution is changing the must to something different. I I would just hate to have that as a requirement if if that causes us to push things downstream. And so maybe the resolution is in media and materials bullet number three, instead of saying must be submitted to the city clerk at least ten days prior, we just changed that to say should be submitted to the city clerk with whatever day, ten days, seven days prior to the appropriate council meeting.
All right. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the the last sentence in paragraph three of presentations where it says presentations by council members and city staff shall follow the process outlined in this section. The suggestion was made to strike that. Is there anyone who is opposed to that? Okay. Since we're all in agreement, we can do that without a vote. And then under section three.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
So I I think that's actually at the end of both the third and fourth paragraph. Presentations by council members and city staff shall follow the process outlined and then it's repeated in at the end of
In that last.
Paragraph four. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll strike the council members shall follow the process outlined in this agenda. Is that right?
As well as, as well as the last sentence in the third paragraph.
Yes, yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I just wanted to, because it's referencing a different section, agenda. I just, maybe while you guys are talking, wanted to see what that actual, like the agenda thing actually says, if that makes sense.
Sure.
It's referencing something else.
Okay, we'll, we'll circle back to that in just a second. And I believe we have consensus on item three and median materials to replace must with should. Is there anyone wants a vote on that?
And is there an appetite to shorten that time period to like seven?
I would suggest seven.
So we will, we will strike both tens and replace them with sevens. Is that right? Anybody opposed to that? All right. Councilmember Kurtz, do you want us to keep going here?
Yeah, keep going. Yeah, keep going. And and if I need to come back to it.
Okay.
Separately, I will.
Uh time limit. So one thing to note here is that there is a um limit shall at ten minutes, fifteen minutes for questions. One um thing that is highlighted in this section is whether extensions, extensions, maybe pardon. May be granted by the presiding officer, in this case, the chair or the council.
So this would be presentations by outside entities. Perhaps whatever.
Well, I guess that's a good question. I I don't know. Um Councilmember Kurtz, with this would apply to everyone making a presentation, right?
Yeah, I think it would. I think that um I think the the spirit of this one was to uh try to have things move a little faster. People be a little bit more concise with the information that they're giving us. Um but if it's something where it needs to be longer, um I don't think any the group when we spoke was opposed to having presentations that are longer, but generally a lot of things can be done in ten to fifteen minutes.
But I I think if I remember the the intent, we were really, the the discussion was talking about outside organizations or like, I think that's what we're trying to cut down on, like having somebody go off and duck, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes on on some particular topic. Um regarding the question uh about extensions, I am comfortable with just leaving it with the council. I don't know that the presiding officer needs to have the ability to extend that. I think if the council wants to continue to listen to it, they'll they'll give them permission to do that. That's my my opinion.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem. If if memory serves me, I I think we've been given them fifteen minutes now. If I'm not mistaken.
There's no specific documented rule. The advice that we give them is to shoot for ten minutes of content and leave five or so minutes for a Q and A.
That's where the fifteen comes in. So I I've always been comfortable with allowing them fifteen minutes. Because it says a council meeting. Allow the council to determine if it should go longer or not.
Um, one thing I will point out that this would um change how we're doing it right now is that we would put up a timer. Under this, so similar to what we do with citizen comments.
I'm okay with that.
I just wanted to point that out. Councilmember Kurtz.
No, I was thinking I was thinking the same thing, and I think that I think that's where the presiding officer allowing it to continue, then they don't have to ask us, which might make things awkward. Um and a little bit more regimented or strict than how it is now. But I also think we don't, I don't feel like we totally hold the fifteen minutes. Um and I think it might be nice to get back to that, so.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think it'd be appropriate for the uh the mayor, whoever is running the meeting, to be able to request uh an extension or let the council make that decision.
Okay. So it seems we have three different options here for that second sentence. Specifically, the highlighted part about presiding officer or the council. First option is exactly how it's written, presiding officer or the council. Section, second option is what Councilmember Spencer um suggested, and then that is just the council. The third option is what Councilmember Kennedy suggested, and that is that the presiding officer can ask for an extension, but the council votes on it. Is that right? Thoughts? Councilmember Ball.
I like the third option.
Councilmember Dunn.
I I think the wording is stated is sufficient. Uh the presiding officer could I guess I'd say I it would take take as much time to take a vote and discussion, the five minutes that we're trying to get in this meeting to begin with. So I think putting the formality to it. I prefer the wording as stated.
Councilmember Spencer.
Um I feel like we could um reword it in a way that allows the presiding officer to to propose that an extension be made, and we're often proposed i- in meetings es- especially like this, like does anybody have anything against that?
Without objection.
Without ha- without having to, you know, get a formal vote. So I feel like if that were the similar process and and the mayor says, you know, do we have any objections to letting this go another five minutes or or whatever, and and there's no problem there. But if there's enough folks that are like, yeah, we've heard enough and we're done, let's move on. Then you can have a formal vote and and be done with it.
So the the fourth option is to uh may be granted by the presiding officer without objection of the council. Councilmember Dunn.
I'd I'd play that scenario out with the wording as stated. Uh the providing officer says I'd like to proceed. The council objects, the council asks for a vote. It's over overriding the presiding officer. The presentation stops. Feels like that wording would allow that.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I I I think by leaving it the the way at it's it is worded, it allows either one of those in those parties to make the decision. If you leave it this way, the presiding officer will say, I'm going to go ahead and allow it without without requiring a vote from the council. I just don't think that's appropriate.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh no matter how we deal with this, it it can get a a little sketchy. Somebody's up there talking and we go, at what extent do we stop this? Uh my memory is going back to where we've had presentations up here, and they're here for whatever time. And the mayor has allowed them to extend. And pretty soon they're repeating themselves a second time and a third. And at that point, how do we stop it? You know, I'm seeing where we've had forty-five minutes up here. And it gets to the point that it puts the mayor, whoever is running the meeting, between the rock and the hard place. But how do you stop this? So one, if there's a timer on it, what I'm trying to also do is not put us in a position to try to embarrass somebody who's there. But I think with a time limit, uh and who has authority to extend it.
Okay, so um why don't we go through these different options and see if anybody wants to make a motion for it? Um obviously, if all these motions died, we would just stay with the language that's in there right now, which is presiding officer or the council. So want to make a motion on the other options that we threw out?
Mayor Protem, can you read option four?
Yeah, option four would be the option that says um extension of time may be granted by the presiding officer without objection by the council. Option.
So that would not require a vote.
Correct, correct. The only unless the council objected to her or he extending the time.
I'd like to make a motion for option four.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Kurtz and second by Councilmember Spencer. The motion again is to replace presiding officer or the council with presiding officer comma without the objection of the council. Yes, Councilmember Dunn.
Uh that would seem to preclude the council from being able to extend.
Yeah, that's true.
If I if I may, can I interject something?
Yeah, Sean.
The whole whole conversation, good conversation. I'm I'm trying to, and I'm sure all of you are doing the same thing, is I'm trying to work through the practical side of it in my mind. Um and how it works with the language that's written. With regard to shall be limited, it's ten minutes. So your rules are going to tell you, if someone's at ten minutes, they're supposed to be done, just like citizen comments, right? So that's that's how that it would should be interpreted. Now, whether it's enforced that way or not is a different issue, but the way it's written, that's the way it would be. As it relates to the extensions of time, a an option could be extensions of time may be granted by the council or by the presiding officer with approval of the council. That could be an option too, where it gives the council the right to do it, or the presiding officer can do it um with approval. Generally, you try to stay away from I'll call it a negative for the lack of a better way to describe it in the sense of without objection.
Yeah.
Um so I I I think it would be easier if you just said, okay, granted by the council or by the presiding officer with approval of the council. But just just a suggestion.
Um, all right, so that is option five. Uh option four is still on the floor because it was seconded by Councilmember Spencer unless it wants to be removed.
I can rescind my uh motion.
Okay, is that all right? We're good on that, right, Sean?
Uh now the second, you'd have to vote on it.
All right, we're gonna vote.
Unless you made a motion to table it.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to table it or? Want to vote on it.
A table, it doesn't just go away?
Yeah.
Let's just.
Okay, let's let's vote on option four. Option four was um may be granted by the presiding officer without the objection of the council. All those in favor of option four, please say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Fails zero six. All right, so now we're back to our other potential options. Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
Your protem, I make a motion that we take the recommendation of our esteemed attorney for number five.
Okay, so uh I'll read number five here. What we would be doing is we would be taking out presiding officer or the council and replacing it with extensions of time may be granted by the council or presiding officer with the approval of the council. And I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Pass the six zero. Okay, so now we have that language. Thank you all. Anything else in the time limit section? Yes, Councilmember Dunn.
Sorry, I'm gonna step back on item one or media materials. One paid for. Um, strike the words videos, DVDs, just put the words media clips.
Yep, anyone have any?
I don't know who's got DVDs anymore.
Some of us are old enough to have them, Dan.
All right.
So what is what word?
Yeah, media clips instead of videos and DVDs.
I agree.
Okay. All right, accessibility. Electronic media shall be visible and audible in the council or to the council and attendees of the meeting who are in person and attending virtually. Any challenges with that? If not, we are up to page thirty-eight, which is the proclamation policy. We'll give everyone a chance to kind of read through this one more time. Any uh Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In the first sentence, proclamation is an official declar- declaration made by this city council. The mayor also has a right to ask for that. If I if I remember correctly.
I'm wondering if that should just say the city.
City because down on I guess whether I wonder if there might be a conflict down on five. The mayor in consulting with city manager and city attorney will determine if the proposed rock proclamation meets the intent of the policy. So maybe it is appropriate to say.
See, I like strike the word council from the first sentence. Uh strike words council from the first sentence, leaving behind just the words by the city. I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Um so I had two items I just wanted to highlight here. One, it's always a slippery slope to put in the word controversial. Because controversial means so many different things to so many different people. So I just wanted to highlight that. I'm not saying I support taking it out. I'm just saying that could get sticky if something is brought up that one council member considers controversial and others don't. The other uh thing I would um mention is that um Well, I highlighted uh three through five. Uh the first is um on three of lead, it says should agree to be in attendance, but I guess it doesn't require them to be in attendance, so that that's fine. Uh I guess on four and five. If if the mayor is consulting with city boards and commissions, shouldn't the mayor also be consulting with the council?
You guys get the final vote, so there is a consultation if you want to think it that way.
That's what I was just gonna say is, or it's the intent that basically the the council would get the final vote when it came up here. So we're already kind of being consulted.
Mayor Protem, I I think um and this is interesting because we obviously just went through this in in a situation where I think that was the first proclamation that we actually attempted to dissect in the moment. It's usually just a you know, it's more of a performance type, I I for lack of a better word, it's 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 just a ceremonial ceremonial type of thing typically. So um uh I I think that becomes a little bit tricky, obviously, if it's uh you know, something that that I mean, obviously, last week we had what, four of them on the agenda? Four different proclamations and then there was one that that obviously, you know, had had some uh some folks upset about, so um so I I think going back to your point, you know, whether that's something that takes place beforehand. Um and I also think as we were looking at these different points uh is is the aim more for for folks who who aren't part of the city who are submitting this? Uh because it refers to a sponsor. Um and and that may, you know, that may not be a member of the city. You know, council or mayor or staff, it may be just a citizen who wants to you know, submit for for consideration, some sort of proclamation. Um and so it seems like perhaps the I I don't know whether the whether the qualifications need to be the exact same for both groups or individuals. I'm just not sure.
Well, and to, sorry, and to Councilmember Spencer's point, this would certainly help shorten up the meetings, but number seven is definitive in that there will be no more than two at each meeting. So just to make sure we're clear on that. Councilmember Kurtz.
And I think too, if we're um going again with like three touch rule and upcoming agenda and putting those things on there, if there were a proclamation that were perhaps controversial, uh maybe that would be the time to work on or discuss that before it's like read at the meeting, I guess. But I think that would give the signal that something is coming up um that if we needed to adjust, because I I have a hard time with again how things went last week where we were trying to adjust it in the meeting after we've already read it. That feels feels kind of weird to me. Um it also feels weird that we read it before we vote on it. Um so I think there are a few things there that we could clean up if we want to. Um and I guess I don't know how other cities do that, if they vote before they read it, or they read it before they vote, or if there's an RCW that says which way we need to do that, and maybe that's a Sean question, but this, I think this is a good time for us to talk about those things and um figure out what makes sense.
Sean, do you have any thoughts on this um proclamation section?
Um, I I think my first thought is Um, I, I think my first thought is don't get lost in one proclamation when generally proclamations are, I guess, rubber stamped for the sake of discussion. Most of the time it's organizations. Um, and or, um, particular days for particular events. Um, and so, you know, most of the time the council is approving them unanimously. Um, and, you know, I, other than just last week, it's probably been a long time since there was an issue with proclamation. Um, you know, it's only been recently that it changed to, you know, having a, a, uh, approval of a, a motion to approve it, you know, in that process, you know, too, I think to, to kind of address it. Um, the, the couple of things that, that I see, um, and I, I don't disagree with Annie as it relates to, you know, seeing it, if there is something that may be controversial and or, you know, there is some disagreement over. Um, irrespective of that, one page of text goes quickly, especially in the formatting of how most proclamations are put together. Um, so that, that one sticks out at me as to, and I'm not saying you need a ten-page proclamation, I'm just saying one page of text. If you're trying to, you know, get everything on there, it might be four font. Um, you know, to get it, um, as it relates to, um, maybe it's something where you have it, you know, as like a resolution, or excuse me, as an ordinance, um, where you want it at a, at a prior meeting, and then you have it approved at a subsequent meeting. Sometimes however, that may be difficult, given the circumstances of the organization or the day or timing or agendas, things like that, but that may be an option, um, as well. Um, and there was um, and, and then I think Jed kinda touched on it, and number one, um, I don't have any evidence, it's more anecdotal, but when you have many organizations that are coming through, are there necessarily someone who's in resident that's sponsoring it? Um, you know, to be a resident of Liberty Lake, it may be a group that participates or an organization that participates in Liberty Lake. Um, but are there, you know, certainly a resident that's the sponsor of it? I, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I don't wanna say to preclude something where the council may be agreeable to an organization and therefore declaring, you know, a, a proclamation for a particular day or something to it. Those would be my comments.
Councilmember Dunn. Uh, I think for the merit of, of proclamation, a sponsor can be found. So I don't think that's a necessarily an obstacle.
Okay.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I think with that one too, I think, um, I was thinking the same thing as Councilmember Dunn about the sponsor, because I think it could be any of us. Um, it could be the mayor, um, but I think it could also be added at the end of that could be, or a community group that serves Liberty Lake or something along those lines that sort of broadens, you know, it's having an impact on citizens of the real lake. Um, and then regarding the sort of the upcoming piece of things in this, it has, um, that thirty days before the proclamation is desired, that gives people time to plan. We would also see it on the upcoming agenda, so we would know that it was coming up, and if we had, if there were concerns or whatever, tho- that would be the time for us to bring that forward.
Councilmember Spencer.
Thanks. Um, uh, I, I think, um, you know, just thinking back to this, this last week, uh, you know, had it been something that, that, uh, was a slam dunk and it was a unanimous thing, we wouldn't have been able to do that because there, there wouldn't have been thirty calendar days to, to submit it, so I, I also don't want it to preclude something that that is a, you know, an easy layup for the council, but because of the fact that, you know, we've set this thirty day, um, prior, um, that, that we can't go ahead and move forward with it.
I think there's probably two sizes of this coin. One, if, you know, I think back to like nine eleven. If nine eleven or something like nine eleven were to happen and the council wanted to come in like a week later and issue some sort of proclamation, um, it, it couldn't do that under thirty day rule, but it all, it could also just come in and waive the rules if it wanted to.
Yeah, waive the rules.
Yeah, so.
I agree.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem. What was put in there that at the discretion of the council, that could, thirty days could be ignored or eliminated in the event of something tragic like a nine eleven or something like that. Once again, it leaves the decision to the council.
All right, so the first, um, the first edit to this was removing counsel from that very first sentence and just saying made by the city. No one had any issue with that, right? Uh, second potential edit is the sponsor must be a, um, a city of Liberty Lake resident, comma, or a group that serves Liberty Lake. Everyone okay with that edit?
True.
Okay. Um. Was there anything else?
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, number seven?
Yes.
My memory serves me correct that the committee, when we looked at this, we, we came up with, of two because of, uh, timeframe. Which I think can think in the past where there was proclamation and somebody is here in the audience. Uh, well, such as we had the, the animal here, that that was gonna take more time. Uh, and last week we didn't have four, we had three proclamations. Uh, so I, I, I believe that why we did that for the three of us was timeframe. So I, I'm very comfortable with two.
Okay. Anything else in this section then?
To the grave.
All right, so next section is, uh, photographs, motion pictures, or videos requiring artificial illumination. Um, this says, um, no overhead projection photographs, motion pictures, or videos shall be used by the public at city council meetings without the prior consent of the presiding officer or the city administrator. Um, the question I have about that is there have been several circumstances where we've had members of the public wanna come in and they sit there with their cell phone cameras and, you know, they're not flashing, they don't have lights on, but they're recording or they're taking pictures. So this, it would seem to me would prevent that unless I'm not reading it correctly, unless they had permission from whoever the chair is. Is that right, Councilmember Dunn?
I think the intention here is to exhibit.
Yeah, yeah.
Not to capture.
Yeah, so this would be like, I wanna commit with my own.
Got it, okay.
Projector.
Projectors up there, yeah.
Okay. My mistake, thank you. Then anything on that?
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
Confirmation then, um, so if somebody wanted to come in and show a picture of something, they would have to have prior approval.
Sounds like a presentation.
Yeah. That, is, is that the assumption we were going on? They would need, they need to show what they were going to. Wh- what I'm thinking of is specifically a couple of years ago on a particular issue, there was a lady that came in and had to do with the one book in the library was questionable and had blown up.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So if there had been prior approval of that, we never would have gone through the issue that happened. Does everybody recall that?
Yeah.
Yeah, turned ugly real quick.
Right.
She wasn't, excuse me.
Councilmember.
She wasn't speaking at the, you know, at the podium though, she was just, she just jumped up and.
Yeah, she came, she came up.
Oh, did she? Okay.
The benefit was, the, the mayor at the time handled it very well.
Yeah.
Shut it down because I'm thinking there was, if we, if we had, would have known, or they would have told, if you're gonna resent something, it has to have prior approval. At least be aware of something like that. That never would have happened. Now, the individual could still jump forward and do that and the mayor would be appropriately, or, or one of the council members would say point of order and eliminate that. But I think it would be important to realize that they have to pre- at least present that to somebody.
Um, Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I, well, I, I think the same individual, or, or maybe it was a different individual brought in like a, uh, carving or a a sculpture or something, right? Or a, painting as well, so, uh, that's not included here, i- if, if we're talking about somebody bringing in a sculpture or some other object to, for presentation. Um, but, uh, also I guess my question is then, without prior consent of the presiding officer or the city administrator, what's the, what's, what are the qualifications for that? If, if, uh, you know, you're presiding today and they come to present to you, how do you decide as the presiding officer or, or the city administrator whether that's gonna be allowed and that could be a slippery slope as well? Oh gosh, I was at the last meeting and, and Mark let me bring my sculpture, but you're not gonna let me bring my picture. Um, that, that could be a little tricky. I don't know, what do you think, Mark?
Well, I, I, I would tend to agree. Uh, my question is, uh, is, is this intended to, uh, i- is the consent intended to be for the action or for the content of the photograph, motion picture, video?
Well, it can't be for the content, can it legally?
Well, that, that would be my
Yeah.
caution if, if that was the intent. Uh, that's, that's why I'm asking the question.
So I mean, it would just have to be a blanket policy regardless of what the content is.
Because, I mean, it, it does, it's specific to consent. It doesn't say, like, to get approval of content, it just says that we know you're gonna do it essentially. So it wouldn't necessarily pre- prevent anything the way that it's written.
So, so this is purely designed to make us aware that someone is bringing this kind of medium into a meeting.
Right.
Good.
Councilmember Kennedy?
And I think, oh, thank you, Mayor Protem. And I think that needs to be left with the presiding officer and our administrator. Uh, you're, you're not gonna get the council involved at that point, you know?
So what, can I just ask a quick scenario then under this? So what would happen if somebody brought in pictures that were printed out on seven sheets of paper to hand around to the council?
We have something in here about handouts.
Oh, okay.
Somewhere.
Okay. Councilmember Ballen, Councilmember Dunn.
Okay, so back to media and materials. I mean, isn't that kind of the same, is what we're saying here? Media and materials where we change it to playing media clips, PowerPoints?
Well, that would be for presentations. This would be for basically public comment.
Oh.
Is my understanding.
No, no.
Is that right?
We're on proclamations.
No.
Oh.
We're past.
Well.
Well, it's the next section after proclamations.
Yeah, but what is the, okay, what's the section hi- title? Because it just be, I have.
Oh, you have eight and nine, which are part of proclamations, and we didn't talk about those.
Yeah, so after eight and nine, which we didn't talk about, uh, on the proclamation policy.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah, then, then we jump to this photograph, so what, what's the context here? What, what are we under? You know, I guess.
We're under meetings, um.
Th- this is one section of the chapter that covers meetings.
Okay, well, yeah, I get that, but, um.
Technically, it's not part of the proclamation section unless the council wants it to be part of the proclamation section.
Well, I've seen anybody come in, move a motion, or a, you know, motion picture or anything to do with the proclamation, I mean, that's I don't think that's the intent, um.
Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
And when, when putting this, the whole document together, if there are things that don't make sense for us that we don't want, we don't have to keep them in there. We don't have to try to adjust language, we can literally take them out. So ponder that as well.
So if we wanted to keep this in here, we could just put a period after council meetings, right? And then that way, it's not a judgment call that the presiding officer makes and therefore it is not a situation where we could legally get ourselves into trouble, or just basically saying our blanket policy is that during these comments, no projection, no photographs, no motion pictures or videos, period. Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you, um. I don't think it's talking about specifically when somebody gets up to do a citizen comment either. Uh, there's no, there's no verbiage there. And, and I guess my question for Sean is, can we even do that? Can we even do this? Can we require, can, can we do that within this structure, uh, of, of, of a meeting? Because there's certain rules that we have that we can do here that perhaps we, we couldn't do if we were out just in a park, talking together. Um, and, and I guess, you know, to, to Mayor Protem's point about the prior consent, it seems like it would need to be something more like prior notice or something rather than consent. Because are, are, one, are we allowed to say you can't bring these things, period? And if not, can we simply require them to at least give us some sort of foreknowledge or, or, um, a heads up about that they're, that they intend to bring it?
I think there's a little bit of blurring of, of the issue. I think the way the language is written is fine. Um, and what it's talking about, I think what you're probably thinking about is the next step. And, and I think it probably usually leads to more disruptive behavior. And, you know, people bringing these pictures because they've got some beef and they wanna show something or, um, sh- um, portray something, and so I, I think that gets into more of a, you know, disruptive type scenario. Um, and there's, you know, ways to address that too, ir- irrespective of this. I think what I'm, what I, the way I interpret this is if you need some of these things or whatever, you can't just show up and expect us that we're gonna do that, right? You've gotta give us the opportunity to address that if it's possible, and if you don't, we're not gonna do it. Um, so I don't have any issue with the way the language is right now unless you want, you guys wanna do something different.
Councilmember Dunn. Uh, in the title and the first sentence, strike the word photograph, use the word images.
Any objections to that? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
And then just to kinda clarify to the, we, I think we're, um, talking a little bit about citizen comments, but citizen comments and their responsibilities is its own separate chapter, chapter ten. So it talks about what they can do, what they shouldn't do, all of that, and those things that we've been talking about are in that too, um, regarding public participation. So if we, if we wanna dive into that, once we get through this, there's a whole separate, it's its own separate thing.
Okay. Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, I just think this is, um, in the wrong place in this whole doc- document, this whole larger document, this whole photographs, motion pictures. It should go to where the citizen comment part is, if that's what we're talking about here. It doesn't make sense here.
Mayor Protem.
I, I guess, you know, and, and we could go back to, you know, whether, whether, uh, individuals are causing a disruption because I'm thinking worst case scenario, somebody either holds up their video and starts playing a video of, of something, you know, and that's gonna be disturbing the meeting, and so there would be grounds for the, the, uh, the chair to cause that individual to be removed, or if they started displaying a, a projection up onto the wall or something, I'm just trying to think again. Worst case scenario, what to, what sorts of disruptions, but I think those could all go back to, um, you know, there, there is some sort of cause for disruption and, and for removal from the meeting. So it seems like those could all kinda fall in, in line, because again, um, we're not talking specifically about citizen comment, period. This could take place at any point during the meeting.
Yeah. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to make a comment back, or on a comment that, uh, Councilman Kurtz made. Uh, I think it's an important point to, that she made, is that when the committee looked at this, committee looked at many different cities on how they do everything. So we put a lot of information in here, and I really wanna point out, a good suggestion is if we don't have to abide by all of this, if there's something we're not comfortable with, we can eliminate it. We have ninety-one pages we're going through. Spokane Valley has sixty-three pages, uh, to run their city. So, uh, we just tried to cover our bases the best that we could to give everybody an opportunity to see what's available from other cities.
All right, so is it then, um, the can, we've already agreed to, if we're gonna keep this, change photographs to images. But is it the, um, consensus of the council to keep this in or remove it?
Are you talking about the whole paragraph?
Just this paragraph or section titled, uh, I guess it would be titled images, motion pictures, or videos requiring artificial illumination, prior permission required.
I, I like it. I think it's important.
Leave it.
Uh, retains, uh. Retains order.
Anybody else? Go in once. Councilmember Spencer.
It seems like, um, I mean, the, the public is not going to be aware of this. So it, it seems like if we are going to implement this, that it does need to be published somewhere on the agenda, on, on an ongoing basis. And, or on whatever they can pick up at the, the entrance.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I'd agree and also suggest maybe putting it somewhere in chambers so that people can see that. You know, maybe up by where the wifi signal is over there. Okay, so it sounds like, oh, good.
It can even be put on the little half sheets.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. So it stays in. And we will move on then to the next session recording of meetings.
Next section.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Attendance of media. Any changes? Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Um, now you see the note off the side as Mark. What do you think? Basically, uh, this was discussed by the three of us quite a bit because we realized in the past, what suddenly was happening, uh, it became almost a zoo with the media in here. Where it's important to designate where they're going to be. So I think it's absolutely critical that we have something in place here. We're sitting down in the mirror. Presiding officer shall designate a space in the meeting room where such record activity may be taking place. I think that has to be, as long as we're in this facility, the council picks a specific spot. It was going to be there or there or in the fishbowl. Uh, because it, in my opinion, it was very disruptive, the news media. Because they, they got moved around and next thing you know, they were over in this corner and it was very distracting.
So I, I can say, and some of you may have even discussed this when you met with B C R A. In the new chamber design, there is a specific media zone, right? So that will be taken care of without much really even discussion when we move into that facility. To Councilmember Kennedy's point, um, there have been, uh, instances where the attendance in the chamber has prevented us from putting, uh, the media where they would ordinarily go. Um, which would be without blocking exits, right? Kind of in the back corner where a deputy chief is sitting. Sometimes that just hasn't been practical. So as we, uh, remain in this facility, uh, we're, we're going to have to play that by ear. We haven't had media attend many meetings. But there have been a couple of instances where the attendance at the meeting has prevented them from going where they ordinarily would go. So.
Okay. Anything else in this section? Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember whether we put it in here, but also, um, I, I think, and maybe it was disruptive. Well. Uh, cause I think we, we were trying to touch on, uh, media pulling people out of the meeting or sitting there talking to individuals during the meeting. And, and maybe that was part of the disruptive public comment or conduct. But I don't, I don't know if that's where we put it or, or if we did put anything in there, but I know we talked about it. It seems like if we just put something in that attendance of media.
Just that they shouldn't disrupt the meeting.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, recordings of meetings. One question I did have on this section is whether we need one more sentence. It's all fine and dandy to record a meeting, but we don't really say on here what we're going to do with the meeting. And so, and maybe we do in another section, maybe it covers it there better. But I'm just wondering if we, um, should add a sentence at the end that says something like, um, the meeting should be posted or, or shall be posted within twenty-four hours to the city websites and YouTube channel or whatever. I just don't want us to be in a situation where, yeah, we're recording the meetings and it's on DVD, um, in the back room. But that's it. Thoughts about that?
Not necessarily on that, but, um, I'm wondering if we, if we do actually have to have the specific address. Uh, or if we'll have to come in and change that ones. Council chamber, can we just say at City Hall? Somebody likes ci- city council chambers at City Hall?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, the assumption is people will know where City Hall is.
Okay, change that to City Hall? Does anyone have objection with the posting of the meeting? Language?
Where would you put it?
Uh, it could be the last, we just add on one more sentence that says we're going to post it on our website.
In no less than twenty-four hours?
Yeah, I, well, I don't know about the twenty-four hours necessarily, but what, do you have a suggestion there, Mark?
So I'd have to review, I believe this was, uh, called out specifically in the Transparency Act language that we had previously discussed. I would want to make sure it's consistent with that, but whatever that is, we can include that.
Okay, yeah. Could be forty-eight, could be thirty-six.
And it might be in the, like, the city clerk roles. That's what I was trying to look at too, to see if it's, if it's in here somewhere else. Um, that we just haven't gotten to yet.
Okay.
So are we putting it in recording of meetings or somewhere else?
Well, can we just add that one sentence here, Mark, and then we can come back to it once we go to approve the final thing?
Sure. Rochelle, do you have that?
Anything else on recorded of meetings?
To me, distributed.
Posted.
Whenever posted.
Okay, rules of conduct. Three main rules. Cell phones and devices should be silent. Side conversation should be avoided. Council members should limit the use of electronic devices to access agenda materials and other agenda related information during meetings. Anything here?
But does that include us looking at stuff on the computer, you know, the, the agenda and like if we're looking for something speci- something specific, you know?
Agenda related?
Yes, uh-huh.
That's okay.
But it doesn't say that.
Um, access agenda materials and other agenda related information.
Oh, okay.
Anything else? Okay, disruptive public conduct. One section that is highlighted here is, um, city clerk. Does anybody on the, um, committee want to touch on why that's highlighted?
City clerk, where's that?
Yeah, I see it right in the middle there. It's up on the screen.
That's different than on here, sorry. Just, I guess, just as far as like the role, who, who would do it? Who would turn it off? Like, I think we have Evan. I mean, I don't know who, who would turn off a microphone or mute somebody. So I think it was more about who the appropriate person is for that.
I think Rochelle would be happy to turn it off, right? No comments for you.
I don't think we need to adapt that character, just that the
City staff.
Microphones will be turned off.
So we could leave it like that, or as Councilmember Dunn suggests, we could just strike that, uh, city clerk with the permission of the mayor and just say something like,
City staff.
Yeah, the business, uh, to conduct the business of the city. The microphones will be turned off and the mayor will ask the speaker to please stop speaking, speaking and step away from the podium.
Sounds good.
Yeah, maybe I have an objection with that.
Mayor Proten.
Yes, Councilmember.
I'd go back just previously to that. Under public con- conduct says that they're limited to three minutes unless permitted to continue by the presiding officer. We now have a policy is you get three minutes and that's it, you're cut off. I don't feel that the presiding officer should have the authority to let them continue to speak.
Councilmember Kurtz.
So the, the public, that was loud, sorry. The public has its own section, so this isn't specific to citizens and their three minutes.
Can you say that one more time?
So the, um, chapter ten is about. Is duties and privileges of citizens, um, which is different than and the same in some ways as disruptive public comment. But when we're talking about the three minutes, citizens have three minutes.
Right.
Hard and fast, three minutes.
Right, what it says here though.
But we don't, we don't have a limit for anybody else to speak for three minutes. So I think it's implied that we're talking about citizens, right?
Okay, but this says a speaker. But I guess you're right, the, okay, so the three minutes. So I guess then one of my other questions is, do we need? Do we need to say some of these things here if we're thinking this applies to citizens? Does it need to be said here? Or does it need to be said in the citizen part of it?
Which chapter is citizen number again?
Ten, chapter ten.
And we already went over ten, right?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, September thirtieth, we went over seventeen, ten, nine and five. So I mean, I guess if we feel comfortable that ten covers all these things, we could just strike this entire section.
Uh, yeah, at the end of that, uh, um, at the end of verbal comments in ten, it does say any disruptive conduct as determined by the presiding officer shall cause for removal from the meeting room. So and, and we do detail out in A, B, that talks about that they have three minutes. So it, it may be.
Yeah, I'm wondering if.
Oh, yeah, B.
Yeah, A and B. So I'm wondering if we need this entire section at all.
If it can be.
Okay, now you're back to.
Yeah. In section eight.
Mayor Proten.
Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
If I may reiterate, if it's in, the wording is in ten or under disruptive public contact, my issue still is with that, that the presiding officer can allow the individual to extend more than three minutes.
Right, so in ten, under verbal comments in ten, it's under item B. It says each speaker will be granted three minutes to speak to the council or designate will, uh, time comments. The council may in some instances grant additional time. This in eight says that if the speaker exceeds three minutes, presiding officer essentially can extend it.
That's a conflict in itself. My concern would be is that if we suddenly get into the point of saying, okay, should we allow this individual to extend, extend the time? Now we have the council involved. And Councilman Dunn made a good point earlier that it just adds to the meeting. Whereas if we had in there, you've got three minutes, that's it.
I think it's consistent and then it doesn't allow for, well, you gave them three and a half. And I, like, I, I think, I think the three minutes needs to be, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn.
No, that's right. Go ahead.
But if they need to be consolidated and put it in, put into one disruptive public conduct section, that makes some sense to me. And then, um, I, I think the process about the turning off the mic should be with it. I just don't know that it needs to stay here.
So can I make a motion then to, I'm sorry?
When you say here, you're talking about in chapter ten.
Yeah, whichever. I don't, I don't know where it makes the most sense for it to be. And maybe that's like the, sort of the editing piece of it. Um, where it can be consolidated and, and put where it makes the most sense for flow of the document.
So I'm going to make a quick motion then to, and hopefully this will make sense, to take the disruptive public conduct section, which is those four paragraphs in us, uh, chapter seven, thank you, and move them to ten to consolidate with verbal comments under that section. Does that?
That makes sense.
One second. Councilmember Kennedy?
Discussion, uh, discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, would be as we, then what we need is wordsmith in there to clarify. Three minutes is three minutes.
Yeah. Any other, uh, comments on the motion?
So everything from disruptive public conduct all the way to chapter eight is going to be moved?
No, just the section that's, is disruptive public conduct, which is four paragraphs.
Okay, so ending where it refuses to move away.
Correct.
Okay, that's all going to go to.
To ten.
Ten.
Yeah.
Mayor Proten.
Yes.
Um, I'm wondering, because it seems like beyond the first sentence, everything, everything that's referred to there has to do with individuals basically speaking out of turn or longer than they should. Um, it does kind of give a process at the end there about, okay, uh, you know, the mayor's going to gabble a five minute recess and, and then we'll come back to public comment. And so, but the title of this section is disruptive public conduct. Um, and so the first sentence addresses that generally, conduct in any form that interferes with the council's ability to timely conduct the business of the city will not be allowed. It seems like that could stay here. Um, and, and perhaps we don't have to elaborate. So perhaps we could just leave that title and leave that first sentence. Um, the rest of, the rest of this appears to be dealing with, what do we do if somebody keeps talking and, and we've asked him to stop talk, talking? So I don't know.
Okay.
Although the last paragraph may, maybe touches a little bit more on, I mean, we, we still hear top, stop talking, but that's not the only way somebody might disrupt the meeting.
So the motion right now is to move these four um, paragraphs under disruptive, disruptive public conduct to chapter seven and I'm sorry, to chapter ten, thank you. And, um, reorganize it essentially, kind of just build it into chapter, chapter ten. Any more discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, this passes six zero. All right, so that section is moved. Adjournment due to emergency or disruption?
Mayor Proten.
Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
I almost feel like that would fit with the rest of it moving.
In ten?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
The adjournment due to emergency disruption?
Well, yeah, let's talk about it. I mean, if, if, I don't want to make motion if, if it doesn't make sense.
Well, because this talks about fire, natural disaster. I mean, we could be having a perfectly calm meeting and, you know, fire alarm goes off.
Or, you know, whereas ten is, um, citizens, right, citizen engagement. So
Yeah.
This does actually address meetings.
Rules and procedures, yeah.
I'm comfortable with that here, I think it does make sense
Yeah, I do too.
a- as it would come after rules of conduct and.
Okay.
Unless there's any other thought of the council on that. Okay, yeah. All right, so that is the end of chapter seven.
Okay.
All right, um, we are halfway through the meeting, do we wanna take a short recess and then we'll come back and do the rest? All right, we'll recess for five minutes?
Dan, you had a good.
All right, we are back from our recess, continuing our conversation on the Prophecy Governance Manual, and we are up to chapter three. Councilmember Spencer.
Just one, uh, quick point of clarification, I went back to our current, um, rules and procedures, and I'm wondering whether, um, disruptive, um, behavior is addressed more succinctly here, all it says is any audience member who is disruptive shall be asked to leave the meeting per RCW, blah, 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 continued disruptions may result in a recess or adjournment per RCW, like, that seems pretty succinct, I don't know if we oughta, if we need to go through that entire procedure with, you know, gabbling five minutes and all, all that stuff, I don't know if that's necessary, but, and, and maybe that's all called out in the RCW, I just don't know.
So Mark, when you guys go back to kind of combine chapter seven with chapter ten, I assume they'll kind of reference the previous manual as well?
We will make sure that, uh, to the extent that, um, there's common language, yes. Um, if, as council is approving these changes, we're, we're making the presumption so correct as if we're making it incorrectly that this will in full of those, or in, in light of those changes supersede the current rules of procedure, so if there are things in the current rules that you wanna preserve, they need to be interjected into this document.
I think, uh, what Councilmember Spencer is saying is that there may be just a more concise way to say it that we already kind of say it, and then.
Sure.
I assume you guys are good with that, when you guys start to combine the two?
You, you will need to tell us if that's your preferred language.
Yeah, yeah, cuz this is gonna supersede that, the council rules.
Yes, right.
Councilmember Kurtz.
So, and if, if we all need to agree and say this together, my preference is that when you guys are going through and wordsmithing things, if you guys find a better way to say something with less words, please do so, that would be my, my take on, sorry, my child is supposed to get ready for bed. That, that my, I would be giving permission for that wordsmithing to be done with C staff and Sean to find the best way to say something, but that may be just my opinion and not everybody else's.
I would, I would concur with that.
Because this, this was a conglomeration of a lot of different things and I, um, I, my intent was for it to be a little bit better before it came here for us to talk about, and so I think that the betterment comes as the editing process moves forward. Um, but I want everybody else to speak up.
I'm gonna be less word, more, better, less words than more.
And I, and, if I may interject, uh, I, I think, you know, the, the intent would be that we, we'll go back and, once you guys have gone through all the chapters and feel comfortable with staff and myself reviewing it, um, you know, we'll go through and have a redline version, if you will, and if there's something that we say, hey, oh, section two and section six are saying the same thing, we'll delete one of those portions, and then it'll come back, you, you guys can take a look at it again before we put it into a readable format, um, it's not redlined, I mean, I think that would be the, at least in my mind, what, what would come before the council, and so um, it's a lot easier to have a lot more in there and take it out than trying to manufacture something from, you know, different opinions, so um, we can, you know, go through that process.
Any other comments on that? Okay, all right, so we're up to chapter three of communications, um. Any thoughts on the overview first?
Looks good.
Okay. General communications section. There's a lot highlighted in here. Anything specific that the committee wants to touch on?
Um, I, I think the comments on the side kind of speak to what they are, um, just some comments directly to Sean about whether what's in here is accurate, um, making sure that the correct references, because things moved around quite a bit, um, you know, is article one, actually, article one. Um, so most of it is just making sure that in the end, then the final editing, that those things are referencing the correct things. And then we, there were some different ideas that other cities had and that we talked about as a group too, about having like, um, a listserv, so residents could just email city council all at once instead of having to find Jed Spencer and find Linda Ball, and um, so those are some of our ideas, um, to hopefully make it easier for citizens to communicate with us.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember.
But not, the, the, uh, topic sentence, general communications, uh, insert the word all city-related, insert written correspondence, um, from councilmembers should.
Okay, any opposition to that?
I'm sorry, where, where is that located?
First sentence, all city-related written correspondence.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, communications with the public. Okay. Uh, media alert section. This is, uh, I'll just chime in on this section here, this is one section, um, that I have a little bit of hesitation with. And the reason for that is not because I don't understand the need to make sure that Mark and the mayor are aware of of issues that are coming up in, in the media, but rather, again, as I've mentioned before, my concern here is that it it hurts the ability of a council member who is s- s- technically a separate branch of the government from being able to express a viewpoint without notifying the executive branch that they're doing so. Um, so for instance, if there's a big issue out there, that there is strong disagreement between the executive, the mayor, and the council, what this is basically saying is that that council member has to check in and give the executive branch notification that they're going out and talking to the media about it, or that the media is requesting that they talk about it. I mean, half the time we get calls from the media asking us to speak on different things. Councilmember Kennedy.
I would also ask that if, if, what this is saying is that we need to contact council, mayor, city administrator, how about in the event that mayor or city administrator talks to the media? Are they gonna in turn have to give a report back to us? Good for the goose, good for the gander.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, the second line in the media alert one references a, a different section, but it says the city administrator and the mayor, the designated official media contacts for the city's position, so I feel like with that sentence, it would be expected of them to communicate an official city position. If they wanted to communicate their own individual position, I think, I, I hear at the point that's being made there, but I think with, um, it doesn't prevent us from responding to the media, it's when we initiate contact with the media, and I feel like that fits with, um, with transparency, um, and making sure that um, if there's something that's going to, I mean, if we're communicating with the media, what we say probably will be in the media, um, and I feel like that, that we should just be open about that.
Can I ask a quick follow-up? So that was one question I had is, so the, the word initiates, so what this is basically saying is that if the, uh, if a council member were to reach out to the media and say, hey, you know, you guys should pay attention to this or to that, then, um, then under this, they would be required to send that to the executive.
Yeah.
But if the media were to call a council member on an issue that's going on, then that wouldn't apply?
That's what it says, yeah. Cuz we do get calls all the time, and I assume that everybody gets them, I assume the mayor gets them as well. I don't know if that's an accurate assumption, but I think it would be, well. Yeah, I think if we're going to initiate something, then we should be transparent and say that we called whoever.
God, it's almost like we start splitting hairs here, uh, what if it's just, uh, uh, initiating to say, hey, this event's going on, I think it's outstanding, want to do an article on, suddenly now we have to be in a position to notify the mayor and the administrator? Or something like that, I just, I mean, how detailed do we wanna get? Does every T have to be crossed, every I has to be dotted?
I, I will just say, in the normal course of events, I'm, I would say in ninety percent of the circumstances, I wouldn't have any problem with this section, my, my only pause is what happens if there's some big controversy with the mayor and, and I'm not talking about our current mayor, I'm just talking about whoever the mayor is and the city administrator and a city council member wants to speak about it, now, under what you're saying, Councilmember Kurtz, that wouldn't be an issue as long as we weren't the ones to initiate the contact. But that's my own, I, you know, I'm just thinking down the line, if something were to happen, I wouldn't want to make it so that the council couldn't talk to the media. Without, you know, without getting the permission essentially, or, or at least giving a heads up to the executive branch, again, in the normal course of events, it's not a big deal, but it's that one scenario in the future that we're not planning for.
Well, it does say in that last sentence, as soon as possible after they have spoken with the media, so at that point, they've already, whatever they were gonna do, it's done, so.
Yeah.
And it doesn't include talking points either, it's like,
Yeah.
I talked to KXLY today on a pool.
Yeah, well, it does say that it, the topic needs to be indicated, but.
Councilmember Kennedy.
What we're looking for here is a, an opinion or a process, what is the consequences to this?
I don't think there should be any.
Good point, if there should be consequences, why are we making such an issue?
To improve transparency and communication.
Right, I'm making a bold statement like that is to get comments, cuz I think something is needed here, but I what happens when stuff comes up, in my memory, I go back in the past, of what things have happened that have created these challenges. We had a situation with a previous mayor that became huge. Is that something that, we have to give a report back to that individual? I agree, so you can see the, what, what are the ramifications to this? If we have a rule or law and there's a ramifications, why do we have to rule a law?
Well, this specific topic is to improve our communication.
I appreciate the transparency aspect.
Yep.
That's more involved.
So to the, um, the committee that worked on this, so as noted in section, what are we referring to there?
We need to put in the right section, there's another section, um, about rules and responsibilities that outlines the city administrator, the mayor's role. So it's referencing that section, I just didn't know where it was gonna land in the final draft.
Okay, and then the council members should send, okay, after the council member initiates contact with the media independently, council members should send an email to the council, now doesn't that create a, a meeting?
Can ask Sean about that, but I think receiving information, it's the replying back and making a decision that would be a meeting.
I didn't catch everything that Linda said, but it's receipt of information, it's fine, it's when there's the reply and then communication back and forth, that's when potential meeting arises.
Okay.
Okay, so anyone, any more comments on that section, Councilmember, Mark?
Would you like my perspective?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, on this particular matter, uh, I, I view this language as, uh, confirming that we're all on the same team, right, and so, um, to use, uh, the hypothetical that Councilmember Kennedy, um, used just a minute ago, uh, we have a communications liaison, as is stated here, the mayor and the city administrator, the officially designated, um, media contacts, and so if there was a, uh, initiation of contact, uh, about an event, um, it would be great if we knew that contact had been made so that we could uh, support whatever it is that you've made the contact to, uh, get the word out about, um, versus hearing it later and not knowing where it came from. And so that's how I read this section, I don't read this section as, um, anything other than we are uh, officially stating that we're all on the same team and we're keeping each other informed about what, what's going on.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I think the real benefit here is a follow-up, would, but I agree with what you're saying is the last four words or five, the topic that was discussed, just a matter of saying, hey, this was the topic we discussed. Nothing's in there that we have to give a written report, it's just a contact and we talked about how wonderful the lake is.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, um, council representation section.
So, to be clear, we're leaving it.
Leaving it for now, yep.
Okay, but we'll get the section thing filled in.
It's about speaking to community groups or governmental agencies on behalf of the city? Any thoughts, questions, comments? Okay.
You know, just.
The comments looks good.
Um, yeah, on this correspondence, city letterhead, um, I mean, is it necessary, I mean, if, like, if somebody, I wrote down, I mean, what if a citizen emails me, can I answer it, I mean, I don't have but do I have to come in here and get a letterhead and, I you see, you see what I'm saying, is that required, I mean?
No.
Well, yeah, I just.
Not required, it is appropriate. If you wanted to.
Yeah.
So I think I've used city letterhead once in six years. And I had to, I had to ask Mark where to get it, like, it was one thing, but I wanted it. Like it, it was one thing, but I wanted it to be official, um, from my position, supporting something for somebody, to improve the city, um, but it was like one time.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, emailing, uh, we don't have, I mean, whatever your normal signature is on your email.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Anything else with the correspondence section? Pretty good. Okay, counts, uh, communications with other council members. About serial meetings, email chains. Okay. Public Disclosure Act, Open Public Meetings Act. Which goes into three different sections, A, B, and C. Just, uh, real quick, I'm sure this will be caught, but on nineteen, page nineteen and twenty, we have an email address to the city clerk in Bothell.
Yes, there's a comment on there about, okay, the correct address.
Well, and then the bullet below it. The council member wishes that an email be distributed to a city staff member. The council member will forward said email to the city manager. Shouldn't it say administrator since that's what we call him?
Yeah, we'll, we'll sweep the document and make all of those changes. Cause it says that in several places.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes.
Councilman.
Under, um, State Public Disclosures Act and Open Public Meetings, there are many statements that I personally feel that RCWs and stuff make very good comments, one of the rights to citizens. This particular sentence to me should be printed out and displayed in city hall. Where it says the people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people delegated authority do not give, do not give, do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know, what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed that they may retain control over the instrument they create. We talk a lot about transparency. I see that quite often. That is a great comment.
Anything else on page eighteen before we turn to nineteen?
Mayor Pro Tim, may I ask a clarifying question? Um, I've got this marked in my notes and I overlooked it for a couple of minutes. Uh, the bullet in section C, electronic communications, paragraph two, third bullet. I just want to make sure I understand, uh, what the intent of the staff will not review email unless a public records request is received is intended to mean.
Yeah. So this is, uh, section C, item two, the third bullet point.
Uh, I, we, I don't recall discussing this, but I have to assume that it's probably just means that city staff isn't, you know, drumming around through everybody's emails, un- unless there's a reason for them to be doing it. Unless the public has requested that, I don't know. What's the standard practice for city administrators or clerks? Mayors, I, I, I don't know. I don't know what access all of you have, have to our records or vice versa.
So if, if this is intended to just mean on a routine basis, staff isn't like spot checking email or something. Um, I, I would agree with that. I just wanted to make sure, um, that we weren't talking about the emails that were part of this specific aspect of communication, which is called out in this section. It's talking, I, I assume it's talking about generally. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Any issues with, uh, section B, the written communications part? And then down to section C, so we already talked a little bit about bullets under two. Okay. Yeah, councilor.
I just had a clarification when I'm reading some of those, where it comes out there. It's, there's always a reference to here of council. Well, the council is seven individuals and we have the mayor's office. So shouldn't the mayor also be, office be mentioned a lot of these?
Can you give an example?
Pardon?
Can you give an example?
I'm reading here under electronic communications. The community members sends an email to a council member to request that it be included in the records of particular public. Any of the council members will forward the email to the city clerk, blah, 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 to the full council. Does it all come into play? There's always been this confusion that some individuals interpret the council as eight individuals. But then there's several council members who make, who vote on the majority of the issues. So I just wonder sometimes if the mayor office needs to be included in this, a lot of these things.
So, um, kind of on that point, I mean, under B, we say written letters and memoranda received by the city addressed to couns, to a council member or the council as a body will be provided to all city council members. So, uh, council member Kennedy, are you sugge, are you saying that, you know, if, if that's gonna be the case, why don't, if the, if something is sent to the mayor, why doesn't the council get to see that?
Yeah, yeah, council should have, should have access to that.
They're not addressed in council, they're addressed to the mayor. Separate parts of our city government.
Not going into specific details, I know that in the past, there's been situations where a citizen will write something to the council and the mayor. And that through whatever mistake or something like that, it didn't get to the council until sometime later. So if it's any, something that comes in reference to the city in general, I think goes to the mayor, I have no challenge with that. If the council is mentioned in there, they should receive a copy of that. For the simple reason, I don't want to be embarrassed again by a citizen who writes something to the council and mayor. And then three weeks later nails me at Starbucks because I'm being rude to him. And I go, I have no idea what the hell you're talking about.
Well, I hope that the list serve would help with that. Um, the list serve, so that if, if they're me, mean to email all of us, they'll email all of us with one, one click of a link versus having to add everybody and forgetting somebody or, you know, whatever might have happened in that situation. So hopefully that would, um, meet that need, I guess.
I'll just say real quick, I, you know, I, um, be going back to the whole separation of powers thing. I'm not comfortable with us requiring that we get to see the mayor's emails. No. Unless it is, as you mentioned, um, or maybe it was council member done who mentioned it. Unless it's also addressed to some city council members. Yeah, councilor.
I really want to emphasize if it's to the mayor, then that goes to the mayor. But you know, whether it was, even if it depends what it is, if it's addressed to the mayor, I don't need a copy of that. I don't think I have a right for that. If this goes directly there on it, if it's addressed to the mayor and council, that's a different story. Now we're included in that, we need to be included.
Any other?
Changes.
Nothing on C? Okay, so incoming correspondence. So this is kind of, again, a, a repeat of what we were just talking about here. Uh, in terms of email.
So with this one, there's the comments on the side and some of it's highlighted. Um, and the question is, uh, is there a different preferred process, um, for Mark to weigh in on that? That was one of the original comments that the committee came up with. And then again, the other comments that are highlighted are about sending up a city council mayor admin email. So we all get things. So I feel like that, those are, that's why everything's highlighted in this one. Um, just to make sure that the, what's written here actually follows the policy. Um, so I feel like the city, you guys are the ones that need to edit this to make sure it's not wrong.
Right, and, and this is one of the ones, and there are several sections that, uh, are similar. Um, I wanted to make sure that, uh, the conversation was, was had amongst all council members, um, so that we could hear your feedback and then make any other adjustments that we needed to make and to specifically address the questions about, um, various email addresses and, uh, listservs and those kinds of things. All of those technological tools can be utilized and, and we can easily set those up so that the channel is just automatic almost.
So when, um, when this says that the mayor delegates the acknowledgement and response to the city administrator or another appropriate staff member, and then it goes on to say, council members are free to individually respond to any emails sent to this email address, address. So we're talking about two different ways here. Essentially, the, the mayor can assign a, a city department head, for example, to respond on a specific issue. And then separately, the council member or a council member can respond as well. Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I think the key distinction in this particular paragraph is that the email comes in to everyone. That, that's the purpose of the address is to, to reach everyone.
So that's, is that what Annie's talking about? To have, uh, one email address for mayor and council and.
Yeah, if someone wants to give a citizen comment on a topic, they can email all of us all at once versus having to.
Put all our names in.
And forgetting somebody or.
Yeah.
Whatnot, yeah.
Well, that should solve the problem that, that Mike had, that.
Well, I just want to reiterate, anything that comes into the mayor, addressed to the mayor should be given to the mayor or administrator. And council should be included in that, there's no reason.
No, no, if it's addressed to all of us and.
If addressed to all of us, that's a different story.
Yeah.
Reason why I say that, cause I, I take exception on rare occasion that's happened. And suddenly what tends to float back is that, well, staff purposely did to send that out. I don't believe that at all. And I don't think it's fair to say that about staff or council, even the mayor's office to say, well, that, they purposely held that. Let's still play those games. I'm trying to prevent that.
Okay. That's the email section, physical mail section. Okay. Response process.
Mayor Pro Tim. So I'm thinking in terms of, uh, physical mail. Um, I, I don't know that any of this stuff that I've received to my attention i- has been marked personal. So in, in that situation, then it looks as though, um, that that would be required to be opened, date stamped and scanned and emailed to the city council distribution list. I don't know if that's necessary.
Where's that at again?
So under physical mail, all physical correspondence, unless marked personal on the outside envelope, will be opened, date stamped and scanned and emailed to the city council distribution list. Or if addressed to a specific council member only, um, that council member. So in other words, I don't know if that's Rochelle or whoever's responsible for opening up all the mail, scanning it and emailing it to us rather than us just come pick up our mail. So I don't, I don't know if that's necessary, but.
Can it be faxed? Can you fax it?
Oh, my God.
I've got it.
So I think this is another one where it's, it's highlighted just because I don't even know if we do this. And so I think that city staff will come up with, if, if we do this at all or not. It is what other, some other cities do. So, and honestly, I don't, we don't get a ton of mail. I mean, I don't, um, so, um, if it's.
But if you had to do that for everybody, you know, even if we only get ten pieces of mail in a month or something, just gotta do that times seven, so.
Well, most of the mail is from A W C, so we don't need it scanned, I mean.
I think it's in here.
So, um, I knew that we strikes to the two physical mail.
I agree.
Any objections to that? Okay, so we're striking two. So three will become two. Anything on three? So I did have one quick question about three here, and maybe I just have an old version. I had, in providing response, council members shall, and then it ended, oh, there it is. Okay, so it's just gonna refer to that other section then, okay. Yes, councilor.
I've often thought that possibility of sometimes taking, saying council members to say elected officials. Council members can be interpreted just as seven of us, elected officials includes all of us.
Any objection to changing council members in this section to elected officials?
It's not an objection. I think that when we're talking about this, I'd have to look and see, we're lumped under representatives. So the mayor and city council member representatives, so if we need to clean up that language throughout to say representatives, because some of these, I mean, the governance manual also applies to boards and commissions. So everybody together is representative.
Right, that's why I point that out. I think this is something that, you know, is being highlighted here, brought up, but it's.
All of us.
It, it's through this whole thing.
Yeah.
That if we, if we put elected officials, then it lumps us all into.
Yeah, I think the proper term is the representatives, because if it applies to the boards and commissions, they're representatives too.
Or elected representative, yeah.
So representatives instead of council members?
You say elected representatives?
Representatives.
Because the boards and councils aren't, I mean, yeah.
They're not elected.
They're not elected.
Can I have clarification or a comment from our attorney? Could it not say elected representatives? I just wonder representative is not a precise enough word.
I, I think the, uh, if you say elected, you're not gonna apply it to everyone, cause not everybody's elected. And I think the intent is to apply it to boards, all the commissions, planning commission, community engagement commission. None of those individuals are elected. So you could theoretically make the argument that this doesn't apply to them. Um, I don't think that's the intent. Um, I think it's about the definition. And I think where Annie's going with it is representative will include all the, all the above. Mayor, elected officials, council members, commission members, board members, so on and so forth.
Thank you for that explanation, makes sense.
Okay. Uh, internet use. Uh, internet use. I did have one question about whether, again, what, just to shorten things up, if we, if we already say it on page twenty-one. Council members shall avoid accessing any electronic messaging during council meeting, do we need to say it again? Or could we just strike that, shorten up a little bit?
It's redundant.
Think we probably want to say it, because this, so I hear what you're saying about that one sentence, but I think that. The other part of it, I don't know that we did say about. Um, receiving public comment without the benefit of having a citizen in person to address the concerns, avoiding browsing on the internet.
Well, it did, it did address the, the fact that we should only be accessing things that are related to agenda material, so I, I think that. I think the gist of it is, I mean, I suppose, um, both of those paragraphs could be looked at and.
It's.
It's right on twenty-one though, is it? Or am I just missing?
Highlighted because we don't know where it is.
Yeah.
And then up there, it says page nineteen, so.
Oh, alright. Mine's at twenty-one.
There's a lot of copy editing to be done still.
Mayor protect.
Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
Um, I just want to reject, I'm looking forward, hopefully by the end of the year, that we'll hear from the committee on social media. Because I think that intertwines with a lot of what's going on here, is it, how are, how do we respond? Is it responding through social media sometimes about city business, or I know we've always been encouraged to utilize. City email to give, and question, answers, questions, answers to questions back to the citizens. So I, uh, I think it's gonna be interesting to see the interpretation.
Okay, we can flip over to page twenty-one or thereabouts, whatever the next page is for everyone. Any, anything before we move on to quorum?
Question, yeah. Page twenty-one, the last very top paragraph. I, I'm looking for a simple explanation here, council members shall avoid browsing the internet during council meetings in order to the council full attention. Is it interpreted browsing the internet, if something comes up about a previous. Discussion or meeting and so, the council member and the mayor is able to go on and say, oh, pull up that information. Is that considered?
It would be related to agenda items, I think that's pretty self-explanatory, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Warham.
Um, Mayor protect, I, I think on, um, point A. Uh, I don't know that the OPMA actually forbids four or more council members from being in a group. They're just simply forbidden from discussing city business, so I, I don't know that. I mean, unless it's just an optics thing and we're trying to, but that may be a self-imposition that. Goes above and beyond the, what the law actually states, so I don't know that that's necessary.
So you want to strike that?
Doesn't it say four or more may attend, but may not aggregate in group nor discuss?
Not discuss.
So.
Yeah, so I mean, it's.
Could go to a party, but as long as we're not talking at each other about city business. Okay.
Yeah, that is, that is legal, uh, yeah, there's nothing that, that says you can't be in, in a group of seven at a party, but. I mean, the optics might be bad. But I, I don't, I don't know that the OPMA actually goes as far to say that you can't all be.
Well, and I think.
Aggregated in one group.
I think that's what Councilmember Spencer is trying to say here, is the, the second part of that sentence says, but may not aggregate in groups. Nor discuss city business, as opposed to, but may not aggregate in groups.
To discuss.
To discuss city business.
Could just change it to something like that, but.
I like it.
Yeah.
Any challenges with that? Okay. The other two seem self-explanatory. Quasi judicial hearing matters. Good. Alright.
Um, question.
Um, last paragraph. Okay, so you inadvertently read correspondence, blah, 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 they shall discuss. Oh. Sorry. Never mind. Okay, I'm good.
Alright, we are through chapter three. Now on to chapter four, we've got about twenty-five minutes left here. Um, interaction with city staff and officials. So we can just go section by section again.
Mayor protect.
Yes.
Just going back to, I wonder how, uh, let's say a new council member or even somebody. I mean, it says shall attempt not to read or reply to any correspondence received on a quasi judicial matter. You almost have to like, read the content to know what it's about, I, I don't know. Wonder whether there's some guidance we could get from. City staff or the attorney on what that looks like and maybe there's some sort of definition so that you can spot it right away.
Well, and I think, go ahead, Sean, sorry.
Yeah, so generally, the situation is going to come up in a land use, closed record, public hearing. So it doesn't come up very often, that's, but that's generally where you're gonna see it, so you gotta make, the council's gotta make decisions based upon the record only. And can't have outside comments, correspondence, communications, what have you. I think the intent, and I don't disagree, Jed, that, the, the issue being, well, how do I know what it is unless I read it? Um, I think the, the, the intent is, if someone sends you a three-page document and you read the first paragraph or two, you realize it's something related to a quasi judicial. You don't continue to read it and digest it and think it and then use it. Um, I, I don't, I, I wouldn't, I, I think it's in the context of what you receive. Um, and not engaging it, and you just then subsequently have to disclose that you did receive something. Um, I didn't read it, I'm not using it to make my decision, um, I don't think it influences me, so on and so forth. Um, I think that's all what's, you know, attempting, you know, is the key word, or attempt is the key word. I don't think it precludes you, because, you know, if someone doesn't put something in the subject line of an email, for example. Um, you may not know what it is until you start reading it. Um, but I think the idea is not to just read through a whole litany of things and try to then use other. Um, information or documentation to make the decision when it's supposed to be made on a, a closed record, for example.
Okay. Okay. Alright, so we are up to chapter four, which is on my page twenty-two, around everyone else's. Maybe twenty-two-ish. Interaction with city staff and officials.
Mayor protect.
Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
Under chapter four, second paragraph. The city council also supports and acknowledges that council and the mayor are most effective when working as a team. And as such, the council endeavors, I recommend we put in there, most effective when working as a team. And as such, the council and mayor support mutual respect between city council and city staff.
Hmm, any objections?
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't object, I think that if we use the phrase representatives, that also includes our boards and commissions too.
Okay. Any objection to that?
So they would say the city council also supports and acknowledges that representatives and the mayor?
Um, I would, in the second line, when working as a team and as such, representatives endeavor to support.
Consider counsel.
Yeah.
Mayor protect.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm going back to is that it says interaction with city staff slash officials. Doesn't say anything about committees. What I always look at, that the team that has to work together is the council and the mayor's office. It's critical to work together as one, so I'm just saying to add the mayor's office in with, along with the council. It's just not a signor of the council endeavors to support mutual respect. To council and mayor's office. For mayor.
I guess I'd say I also think the planning commission is an important part, and the community engagement commission is an important part of working together as a team, so. I value the word representative in reference.
So I think. Then I agree with Councilman Dunn, that I think that specifically it has to be added in there, that the, uh, committees follow that category. Further, wordsmithing or clarification?
Um, my reference was that the word representative encompasses all, so I feel that the word representative is sufficient.
Mark? Do you, uh, are you clear on that section, should, do we need more clarification as to what that might look like?
Yeah, I, I guess I would, um. I guess I would caution that if there is a, if, if this is a general. Interaction between city staff and, and elected and appointed officials, let's, let's call that out and, and make it clear. If it's intended specifically to be, uh, the way the city council interacts with staff, let's, let's. Leave it as the city council, and so that's just a matter of deciding what the scope of this chapter is designed to be.
So. So then would it, would it help this, um, discussion if the chapter title. Instead of saying just interaction with city staff slash officials, if it said, interaction with city staff, comma, council. Comma, and the mayor's office, that way we're clarifying that it is not intended to address the boards and commissions?
Uh, let me zoom out and, um, and make a comment about the document as a whole. If, the, the way I have been reading this as we've been going on, everywhere where it says city council. I have not interpreted that to mean representative, and so if it's intended to mean that, we need to say that. Um, throughout, um, in this particular chapter, if the scope of this chapter is intended to govern. Interaction with the staff and both elected and appointed official, officials, let's, let's say that. And so if it needs to be, uh, therefore it is critical that the relationship between. Representatives and staff be well understood by all parties, so policies and programs may be implemented successfully, let's say that. Because it seems we may be. Using. Counsel where we may mean representative and vice versa in various places, and we just need to clarify which is which.
Uh, Councilmember agrees.
So I feel like, and Mike and Jed, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like when we were talking about this section, it was. Elected officials and the mayor and city staff, so I think, not to avoid mission creep, to narrow that down to. The elected officials and city staff, because when I'm looking through this, I don't, without reading everything in the moment, I don't, I don't see anything. Really about the boards and commissions, because they have their own section, so.
And, and I would agree, because in most, most often it says city council. So I, I'm reading that as this body, not extending it to everyone else.
I agree, I think it's important we keep the distinction there and not try to. Become so generic, but I think it's important that elected officials, all eight of us. Understand the relationship with committees and the members.
Okay.
So they are, but those individuals are not elected. They don't not represent, or excuse me, they don't answer to the citizens, will be like the eight of us do.
Okay, so then, um, back to the previous suggestion that the Councilmember Kennedy made, which was to simply add the word and mayor. After, as such, the council and mayor endeavors, is that alright with everyone? Okay. Okay. Okay.
Comment.
Yes, Councilmember.
The interaction with city staff slash officials. Um. That could be misleading, because officials, who, 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 what officials, who are they? Um, it could be. State officials, for all we know.
Shouldn't just be.
Elected.
Elected officials.
So city staff, I'm sorry, interrupted.
Well, what about interaction with city staff slash city officials?
Technically, city officials could include someone like Mark. So if we're trying to lay out the, how the elected officials in the city interact with city staff. Which probably be specific and say, city staff slash elected, city elected officials or elected officials.
Yeah, you could just add elected, because we've already said city, city staff slash elected officials.
Yeah, I would like, I would think that would be better.
Mark, you okay with that?
Yes, be- because the, essentially, the, the section headings are going to provide, the context is going to help define.
Right.
What the chapter means, right, so, and the context of the rest of the sections is defining who, or which relationships you're, you're talking about.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor protect.
Yeah.
So I think if we're going to add, such as the council and mayor endeavors to support mutual respect between, and, and then you could say. Elected officials and city staff, rather than city council.
Okay. Any objection to that? Right up where it says between the city council and city staff. Ben, okay. Alright, roles and information flow, we've got about twenty-four minutes here. Yep, Councilmember.
Um, so a couple of the comments on the side for the highlights, um, were specific to Mark, um. About any definition that he thought would be useful, and then, um. Just sort of establishing some of the communication flows that we've, we've tried to do, but we maybe don't have written down, and so I think. I would be interested in your input on, um, how this should look, if, if this is what we do now, if we should be doing something better. Um, so that would be my suggestion, is to hear from you about what you would recommend.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate that, and, and my goal here is to make sure that we're defining. Parameters that don't limit the exchange of information. Or the timeliness within which that can be shared, and so, um, I will, I will definitely. And, and I'd like to hear your thoughts on what some of those parameters that you expect are, because part of my response is going to be. Uh, based on those, for example, the specific. The specific question about phone calls versus emails. My, my general guideline is if it's easier to pick up the phone and get a question answered, pick up the phone and get a question answered. Um, staff and I will back brief one another as necessary. Um, and so I, I guess I'd like to hear from you with respect to the parameters that you're most comfortable with. Because my general rule with, with members of the staff is, is make sure the information's getting to where it needs to be in a timely way. So decision making can be supported.
I support your statement, Mark. It's consistent with my objectives or what I want for efficiency. Councilmember Kennedy.
I understand the importance to try to put maybe some of the questions in print to have that, but personally, I would rather just pick up the phone. Get the conversation because the challenge with emails and stuff, you don't get the personality, you don't get what the intention of the question is with the statements. On it. So I'm just pick up the phone and let's talk about it.
And I think this is a good discussion to have because there, at some point, I feel like there was a email message or some direction that we needed to go. Through you to get to staff, which is what I've been doing, which it sounds like it's different than what other people have been doing. And I've, um, and I've thought that that's been fine because then you're aware of what questions we're asking and all that and. And that's been fine for me too, but I, um, haven't called anybody and had those engagements, which I think then also helped to build up the teamwork that we're also talking about here too. So.
Absolutely. And I'll, uh, further state that typically if, if you're going to. I, I presume if, if you're going to lay out a set of objectives, like I, I need to see. I, I need a report that includes this, that, and the other. That's, that's going to be done, uh, through written correspondence. Um, and, and so on those kinds of things, of course, if you're emailing staff. Um, copy me on it, uh, you know, I, we're not coming after you if you don't. Um, but, but those kinds of things are easy to keep everybody in the loop. If it's a case of, I don't know exactly what I'm trying to ask, can you help me frame that? And it's easier to call or stop by, do that. Um, if we get to the point where we're not able to correspond or keep each other informed. Because of the method, uh, or the mode rather of communication, then let's have another conversation. But as a general rule, I want to make sure that you all are getting the access to the information that you need. And no, don't take any offense to that, uh, to this without monopolizing the staff's time. If, if I get a sense that that's happening, we'll probably have a one-on-one conversation to figure out a better strategy. Um, but staff's goal is to get you what you need.
Anything else? That's my ball.
Just to be transparent, I'm meeting with Lisa tomorrow.
What, what time?
Uh, three thirty. I hope that's okay.
You copy the rest of the council?
She, I, she has all the maps and all the stuff I need, you know?
And, and let me just say, staff, staff understands when, uh, their. Uh, time is, uh, being stretched. And so they're probably going to tell you before they tell me. Hey, I can't get to this right now. Um, but if I, we have not had an issue here. And so, and I don't want to create a structure that's so formal that we end up spending more time telling each other who we're meeting with. Than actually getting work done. So I'm perfectly comfortable with the process and the system as it's set up. If, if that changes for whatever reason, maybe we'll re-address it.
Mark, is there any situation that you could think of, um, that might be? Too sensitive to send to other council members? And what I mean by that is, and I hate to use this as an example, but we saw what happened. With our next door neighbors and one of the council members who got into some troubles. So is there a scenario in which, um. A council member shouldn't be or wouldn't be notified. If there was a request made by another council member or there was an issue that was coming up that. Made it so that they shouldn't be in that loop?
Sean, um, I, I'm not sure if there are le- legal guardrails that may help answer that question. That you may want to interject here.
I don't want to answer specifically. I'd probably give it some more thought. I mean, I. I'd have to give it more thought. I don't have a definitive comment right now.
I just, the only reason I ask is because I wouldn't want to put the entire council. Or city staff in the position of breaking these rules in the event that something like that were to come up. Which, I mean, hopefully it never comes up, but I mean, we, we just saw what happened in the city of Spokane Valley. One of their council members and some rules that he broke, and there was a lot of discussion, uh, about that. So I, I just wouldn't want to jeopardize. That type of situation.
Yeah, no, I get it. I mean, I think, and the one thing, the overarching thing too, it's, you, you know, you have. The governor's manual and these various things that, you know, require, um, certain procedures, certain process, um. But then it becomes about enforcement, right? And it becomes about what are the consequences? Um, you know, for the actions that someone may take. And so. That's kind of where I'm thinking about is trying to say, okay, well, where, where does that go? What do you do so that you don't create a conflict at the outset? Um, on a particular situation, right? Cause e- every situation could be different. And so that, that's why I'm thinking about. What's going through my mind and trying to figure out, okay, what, what do we do to not do that?
Okay. Okay. All right, anything else on page twenty-two then, starting off with the, um, roles and information flow from the city administrator's side? Okay, city staff, staff roles.
Um, oh, sorry.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go to city attorney.
Okay, okay, just, just a second, please.
On city attorney, the page twenty-nine of sixty-three, what's that all about? It's on my.
It is.
Yeah, version. And all, all city officers and employees. Page twenty-nine of sixty-three.
Yeah, I don't know if there's another reference to something else, if there's something else. Those are, the highlights are really just that they, something needs to be referenced somewhere.
Mayor Protem, I did have a question on staff roles, but I'm going to refrain from that because I think it'll come up. Later when we're in other sections. This certainly affects staff roles.
Ben? Anything on city attorney? Okay, now we're to council member and city staff professional standards. As everyone reviews this, um. I do have a question, I guess, for Sean on number five. And this kind of continues my theme that I brought up earlier. If there is a case in which the city council and the executive are at odds. And the city council needs, or city council member needs the city attorney's advice on something. This is basically saying that we have to first discuss that with. The mayor and the administrator. Am I reading that right?
I think the last sentence in that one addresses that this is not intended to restrict council members from seeking legal advice directly from the city attorney. Particularly in cases related to conflicts of interest.
So I guess my question, and yes, I have that underlined as well. I guess my question is, what, what? Does that include? What does legal advice include essentially? If we are coming to you more as, uh, a question about, I don't know. How, how we.
Could be any, any, how about any procedural issue?
Yeah, any procedural issue, yeah. So that would include legal advice?
Yes, if, if you're asking me a procedural issue about how something is supposed to unfold. Whether it's, um, ordinance, code, statutory base, that would be legal advice.
Okay, okay. And I'm good with that. Yeah, councilmember.
Um, for the, the header, council member and city staff professional standards, just to have that reflect the, probably the elected official. Having that language be consistent throughout.
Which number was that?
Um, it was the header for that same section.
What page one?
Twenty-four-ish.
Twenty-four.
Elected officials and city staff.
I don't, I don't know if that necessarily applies. For instance, uh, point six, no individual council member shall direct city staff. The mayor can do that.
Fair point.
I mean, I guess it, it does specifically call out, uh, c- city council member, but. That doesn't apply to the mayor.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, anything else on one through seven before we continue on with administrative interference?
The, the only question I have is in bullet point, it would be eight, um, where it says city, excuse me. City council member contact with city staff members inclusive of the city manager. Uh, will be during regular business hours except in the case of an emergency. Um, just consider there may be other times than an emergency outside of city business hours that. You, you may need to contact staff and or the administrator. So just keep that in mind. It, it doesn't necessarily need to be that restrictive.
Strike number eight. You want it struck? Mark, or do you want it to just be updated?
Or can you give an example of when we would contact somebody? Cause I don't know when I would contact somebody. Outside of an emergency after business hours.
I routinely get stuff on Saturdays and Sundays, which is fine. And, and I believe other staff members do as well. And it's mostly in preparation for something that's about to occur. Um, and so there, there may be other reasons for that communication to happen. Outside of an emergency.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Cause I feel like part of that sentence is to give you guys some boundaries so that you don't feel obligated to respond to things that are not.
Emergence.
Emergencies. So you guys can enjoy your weekend and enjoy your time off.
Sure.
That would be my intent with keeping that in there. How you, how you do your work-life balance is up to you, but. Like I wouldn't want us to take advantage or be allowed to take advantage of that or expect you to work on the weekends.
Sure. No, and, and it's not an expectation, uh, per se, but for example, um, there have been questions that. Uh, are related to farmers market business that happen. That's not an emergency, uh, but it's also not during business hours. And so stuff like that, um, I, I don't know if we want to just clarify that. And, and maybe take emergency down a couple of rungs. I don't know what that language would be. Um, but just recognizing that there are examples of those kinds of things that. Happened pretty routinely.
It could be just except in the case of unusual circumstances.
Bents or things like that.
So Mark, are you saying you're getting these, uh, calls from council members?
Uh, not, not necessarily calls, but I get.
Or texts or whatever from council members on Saturdays and Sundays?
Electronic communication.
Okay, guys, just stop. That's, that's how we figured it out.
But I just want to make sure, uh, I'm clarifying something here. Um. I mean, a lot of the time, if, if I'm going to respond to city emails or something like that. I might send it on Saturday or Sunday.
Sure.
Doesn't necessarily mean I need you to respond to it on Saturday or Sunday, but I just want to make sure we're not limiting. Our ability as a council to be able to shoot you a, a text or an email and just say, hey, while I'm thinking about this. Or while I have time to do it because obviously some of us have, um, jobs during the day. So I, I, I.
And that's why I'm bringing this up because that's what this says.
Right. Yeah.
I think it's a tough subject because I think the challenge going to be is any elected official at times may have a question from Mark or one of us. Preferably, I think, Mark, that they have to use some discretion. And I think that if it would fall upon Mark, his responsibility for himself to be able to say to that individual. You know, I wouldn't mind if you don't contact me on Saturday. It was not that critical. How about Monday morning? I think that has to be worked out between administrator or staff and that particular council member. Cause I think that the challenge, the challenge I would have is if I'm staff and a council member calls me. It, it, it's pretty difficult. Put yourself in a position, well, do I respond or not? I think they will tend to respond, thinking they have an obligation. And I don't feel they should be put in that position.
Councilmember.
Uh, two things. We are like seven minutes away and before I make a motion to extend the meeting until nine fifteen. Mostly because I'd like to finish this chapter so we don't have to start in the middle. Um, so that's my intent. Um, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to nine fifteen.
Are, are we able to, do, do we have to break council?
Uh, the first thing we have to do before that motion is to vote to waive our rules.
Right.
Cause we haven't officially adopted the.
I.
So, but councilmember Kennedy already seconded it. So we need to table it or.
Yeah, you can just make a motion to, um. You, you, you can make a motion to amend and or, um, well, no, you're right. Cause it's, it's actually part of the rule. So I think you're right. You can make a motion to table it and then do this suspended rules because there'll be two separate motions.
Okay.
Make a motion to table a motion.
Second.
Okay.
And now.
All right, so we'll.
You gotta vote on the table.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on table. And all those in favor of tabling the motion to extend to nine fifteen, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes six-zero. Okay, now we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Make a motion to suspend the rules of procedure.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules, aye? All opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero.
Clarification?
Yes.
Seems, it would, would, isn't it logical that we have to suspend the rules first?
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, now we have to have a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
So I did that. So I want to untable my motion.
Or you can just.
No, you're, 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 you're fine. All I gotta do now is a, a motion to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
I think a motion to extend the meeting until nine fifteen.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, pass the six-zero. We're extended to six, or six fifteen, nine fifteen, not six fifteen, nine fifteen.
I already made that more complicated than it need to be.
That's right.
Um, but my point back to what councilmember Kennedy was saying is I'm wondering if there, um, is some language mark that you can come up with that. Gives the spirit of that because I, I think what I'm hearing is that people don't want you to feel like you have to respond on a Saturday. Um, but if we have questions, again, to Mayor Bartem's point. I might reply on a Saturday because that's when I'm not working my other job. So trying to find a balance.
Yeah, I, I would just modify the, uh, the statement to read. City council member contact with staff members in. I'd say, uh, city council member contact with city staff members, I, I would strike inclusive of the city manager. Will be during regular business hours to the extent practical. And that would be my suggestion.
Okay, anybody opposed to that? Sounds great.
You would not think it'd be wise to put in there that. Except for the event of an emergency?
I think there are reasons to contact staff outside of business hours that don't rise to the level of an emergency.
Correct.
So I would not want to limit it to an emergency situation.
But you, but you're excluding yourself from that.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm a member of staff, so I, I don't. Uh, staff covers me. You don't have to call me out separately.
Yeah. I mean, personally, I, I don't see, personally, I don't see any reason why in a weekend. A council member would have a reason to contact staff. Other than you. Of which would be your discretion. I just don't see. That we should put staff in that position at any time.
That's a fair point, but just a, a, a couple of examples. We, we've had. Flags that have been downed. We've had, uh, sprinklers that are. Sprinkling everything. Um, and, and tho- those aren't emergencies. But somebody needs to take care of them. Um, and so in those situations, I would expect somebody to reach out. Um, even if it's on a Saturday or a Sunday or a holiday. And, and tho- those, that is what I'm defining as to the extent practical.
We're on the same page. I just don't, I get aroused. I don't think it's appropriate for a council member to contact staff. For something like that would be fine, but if suddenly they have a question about something that's coming up or they want some advice. Don't do it on a weekend.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying. The other examples don't rise to the level of an emergency, so if we, if the bar is an emergency, then you can't contact them for those, those other examples.
All right, so everyone's okay with Mark's edit? It sounds like, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, um. We are into administrative interference, is that right? Yeah. Can, um, Mark or Sean, can you define what an outside agency is? Under that last sentence?
Uh, which paragraph, I'm sorry?
The very last sentence of the administrative interference by council members.
Yeah, okay, thanks, um.
The first paragraph?
Last paragraph.
Oh, 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 oh.
Very last sentence.
I'm not sure what that context is, um. I don't, I don't know that in the context of just, just that paragraph. Uh, it, it seems out of place unless. Um, I mean, presumably an outside agency. Um, would be another type of municipal state, some type of agency. Um, just generally speaking. Um, but I don't know if that's right. Um. In just reading the, you know, the prior sentences of that paragraph.
Let's strike it. Strike that whole sentence or just out all council members?
Yeah.
Concerns.
So Mayor Bartham, I'm fine with striking it too, but as I'm reading it, it. Like, if we had concern about, I don't know, um. We don't have individual agency to go and contact somebody on behalf of the city. We need to get that. Approval through the council. Like, I can't just go call, uh, parametrics and say, hey, what would you guys bid on something? I think that would be an example that I could think of. Um, I don't know if we need to say that or not. Um, so I'm, again, I'm fine striking the, the sentence if it makes sense, but I think that the purpose of the paragraph is to, um. Say that the council makes decisions essentially.
I mean, other options, you can either strike the full sentence or just strike before contacting an outside agency if you want to have it come to the full council, but. I, it, it, it's confusing to me as to what outside agency means. Is that a? Third party? Is that another municipal entity, governmental entity? I, I, I don't know that in the context of this paragraph.
All right, so we've got two options. One is to strike that whole sentence. The other is, as council member. I think council member Kurtz mentioned, um, to just strike before contacting an outside agency. So it would end at, um, the full council. Thoughts?
I, I like that suggestion. Just, if you have a concern.
I mean, it, it, it is not a shall, it is a should, so if there's any issue that comes up where, you know, it. It, it gives council members a little wiggle room in case there's something that's happening where. The council member doesn't feel comfortable bringing it to the whole council.
I feel like the sentence before it. Might actually accomplish it too, if a council member wishes to influence the actions, decisions, recommendations, workloads, work schedule. Et cetera, that member must prevail upon the council to do so as a matter of counsel policy.
Yeah.
Sedative thing, yeah.
Okay, so we'll strike that whole sentence.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Making less words.
All right, anything else in administrative interference? We've got about, uh, twelve minutes here. Okay, adherence to non-interference ordinance.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure if you can see the comments on the document that you have, but there were a couple of comments in the highlights. Um, just checking in with Sean about, um, what are processes and then. Just asking questions about whether things were in the personnel policy. Checks on the mayor's office. Um. And then if we were to the last sentence after this discussion. If the mayor will report the concern to the full council for their consideration as outlined in, like, there's not a place yet.
Yeah.
What, what actions would the council take? So I think from that perspective, the committee was looking at some advice from, um, Sean. About how, like, what the next steps would be, so I feel like this isn't. Fully done yet.
Okay. Anybody have anything else you want to add on that one? We'll continue to have it cooked there. Mayor Protem? Yes.
Uh, if the council will indulge me here for a moment, I need to back up on page twenty-four. What I'm looking for is some clarification that. It may be needed to be added more clearly here, or maybe it comes up later on in this document. But. Any interference with council members with committees. I think that's in, very important, because I think some of this alludes to that. Of not requesting city administrator. Discussion meetings and things of that sort there. If it's not here, then it needs to be somewhere in this document.
Can you explain what you mean again?
What I'm looking for is that. It'll, it'll, it'll come up in discussion, is it? Where it's been recommended that city council has no contact or does not attend. Any, uh, committee meetings. Well, AWC is very clear on that. Uh, that their recommendation is that attend, but don't get involved. So there needs to be something in here for clarification to prevent council members from, in essence, taking over. A committee. Or requesting one, which had to, has to come through staff. Or a special meeting.
Is that in another section on?
That's what I'm asking.
At, um, chapter twenty-one.
That's what I was just looking at. Um, because we have communications with city council and I'm trying to see if that fits with what. Um, council member Kennedy is talking about, so I think it does. Um, so communications with city council on page eighty-ish.
Eighty?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, the second paragraph. Uh, advisory board members are appointed by the city council on the basis of their expertise or passion for the subject matter of each advisory board. As such. Council members should not attempt to influence or persuade advisory board members on matters referred to the advisory board. Council members should not attend advisory board meetings in person to not unduly influence advisory board deliberations. Um, similarly, advisory board members should not reach out individually to council members to seek direction or guidance. Communication between the city council and advisory board should be conducted through the designated staff liaison for each advisory board. We also have that highlighted, um, because our subgroup full council to review and decide. Uh, AWC suggests to go to a meeting but not get involved in the discussion, so exactly what we're saying. So when we get to chapter twenty-one, I think we'll talk about that more.
Okay, so that'll be addressed in chapter twenty-one. Um, as for the rest of. Four here. We're through administrative interference. We're up to adherence and non-interference. And we talked about the fact that that section is going to cook a little bit. Um. Administrative complaints made directly to individual council members. Mark, just real quick on this, what if there is a scenario here? Um. Where an administrative complaint is brought forward against the administrator? And they want to take it to a council member?
Yeah, I mean, in that case, uh, it would be that you would refer that to the mayor. Um. And so however, however you wanted to. Differentiate that in this language.
I'm not sure that we need to. I just, that was one of the questions I had when I read that.
A- and it may just be. Um. I mean, that, that is, that's going to happen one, that, that. That's a single exception, right? So you would maybe just handle that if that occurred.
Yeah. Okay. Um, requests magnitude of information. Okay. No surprise rule. We already touched on this a little bit in the three. Three, three, what is it? Three strikes and you're out? What is it called?
Touches.
Three touches?
Balls on your mind?
Okay, and then staff relationship to advisory bodies, so per your comment, council member Kennedy. About the relationship between council and advisory. I assume we'll update this to say administrator instead of manager. And then lobbying efforts. Anything?
Looks good.
Okay, we are through chapter four then. Um, so we've got about four minutes. Um, obviously, Mark, we still have one more chapter and that's twenty-one, and then just the. Look at the other sections as we see fit. So do we need to schedule another special meeting, or how do you want to handle that?
I think. I don't know that we have space for another special meeting between now and the end of the year. Um, and so maybe as we look at future agenda items on the twenty-first. Maybe we can have that conversation.
Okay.
Uh, that will give me an opportunity to look at the calendar and see if there may be a space for one.
Okay. Okay. All right, council member Kennedy, we are now up to council comments.
Oh, okay, very good. I, I, I do want to go on record to say that. We do need to give the allowance to each council member if they have anything else, if they want to make comments on any of these, to have time to be able to discuss that.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, we're now up to citizen comments. You have three minutes. If you'd like to address the council, please tell us your name, and if you're a resident of the city. And try to, um, keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Because that's all we have left.
Yes, because that's all we have.
Yeah.
All right, hearing none. All right, no citizen comments and we are adjourned.